Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the November 6, 2023 County Council Meeting. Is the mic working? We got two of them tonight. We'll make sure y'all can hear us pulling both together. Yeah, we've got new mics going on.
Is the new mic supposed to be on, green light?
Apparently, yes. Work your old ones like you normally have and let the other ones do their thing. All right.
There you go.
I'm going to lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your love. Thank you for the blessings that you have given us. I ask for your protection over those who put their lives on the line to serve us and for peace in this tumultuous times. I ask for your wisdom and guidance tonight as we do the business of the people. I pray that truth would be at the center of all the decisions that are made, and I pray that our decisions would be in the best interest of the community we serve and according to your will. In your son's name, I pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business tonight is the Oath of Office for newly appointed Board and Commission members. If I call your name, if you'll come forward and just stand in front of the podium, and you will be met with our county attorney, Michael Kendry, who will meet you there and swear you into office. We have Quay Williford and Raymond Williams for the Lake Wiley Marine Commission, Chip Hutchison for Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau at large seat, Anne Vialanti, Jamie Hendrickson for the Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Park District, Johnny Starnes and Donald Beckler from the Oakdale Fire Tax District Board. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I say this every time, but I mean it. On behalf of council, we appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve. You do it on a volunteer basis. You don't get paid, and you rarely get thanked. And tonight is the night where we thank you for agreeing to do that on behalf of the people in the community. Thank you so much.
[inaudible]
and some exciting things. Council is going to recognize the graduates of the York County Citizens 101 Academy. And I understand we have a few words from our manager. What this is, is it's an, I actually went through this before I got on council. It's an opportunity for any citizens in the community to sign up and come take classes and learn more about what's happening in York County government. And it is not for the faint of heart. It's actually nine months. It's like you're giving birth to a baby. You meet once a month, and you come out and you learn various things that are going on with the county. And now, I'm going to turn it over to David, who will recognize the folks who have completed those classes this year.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of words. We have been doing this program for a while. It would have been our 10th graduating class, but I think we've had a couple of years of suspension because of COVID. So happy to start back up this year and just want to acknowledge all the hard work that these citizens have put in. And a lot of, also, staff time goes into this. Linda does a great job with it. Everybody goes through it, loves the program. Have a lot of staff members that take a lot of time and put a lot of effort into making it a worthwhile experience for all the attendees. So overall, I think it's a very good program to where we can educate them a little bit about how the county government process works and what each of our departments do. So with that being said, just want to thank the students for all their time and the staff for all their time, and Linda particularly. If you want to come up, we'll read the names and hand out the certificates.
Thank you, David. First, we want to recognize Debbie Coninger.
Debbie, if you will.
[laughing]
Debbie, you started off.
Kind of fast, Debbie.
But Debbie, you have certificates. You have certificates for me.
Joe Allen.
Can we get the graduation music in the background, too? Can we play the graduation music?
Congratulations. Sean Caldwell, Janet Clausen, Amanda Daigle, Liz Delfino.
We've got a seat up for you here real soon.
Vanessa Dickerson.
Right on up here.
Aaron Fell, Kathleen Haley. Catherine Jones. Diane Lucht Fella. Allison Mallard, Barry McKinnon, Craig Miller.
That's my man, Mr. Manish.
Robin McManus.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Robin Peterson.
Hey, give me that jacket. I want somebody to say like my jacket, too.
Josh Hender.
Pick a color. Pink, yellow, purple, what's yours?
Greg Susskind.
You got a purple jacket? My wife's having a 50th birthday this weekend, and she wants to wear a purple. I'm like, really? I'm back. Euro size right now.
Forty-two.
I'm about to come hit you up there.
How are you? Congratulations.
I was wondering since Greg was sitting over there, did he take the course, too? Appreciate you completing the course.
Thanks.
Should we get some video footage, Julie?
in that. Our next appearance is Zach Limhouse with the Culture and Heritage Museum to provide information to council regarding the historical marker for William Mason Chisholm and the Durkey Training Institute.
Good evening. In 1932, Rock Hill native William Mason Chisholm founded a vocational school for African-American girls on property that he owned on the outskirts of Rock Hill at the intersection of Saluda Street and Mount Holly. By 1955, this school, known as the Durkey Training Institute, had expanded to include four stone buildings and six cottages with a total student enrollment of 400 comprised of boys and girls as well as adult learners. This school is important because it gave African-Americans access to quality education in the separate but unequal Jim Crow South. I want to invite the council, I want to invite everyone here today in person and everyone listening at home, to celebrate and honor the life and legacy of Mr. Chisholm and the Durkey Training Institute. On Tuesday, November 14, at 11:00 a.m., we will be unveiling a South Carolina State Historical Marker commemorating the institute. The marker is sponsored by the Culture and Heritage Museums of York County, but was funded by York County through the advocacy of York County Councilman Bump Roddy. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Bump, for your support of this project from the very beginning. I have flyers with me that will give you details. Please feel free to grab one on your way out. It's right next to signup sheet. The New Beginnings Daycare on Saluda Street has been kind enough to allow us to use their parking lot for parking, and that address is on this flyer. That address is 1442 Saluda Street. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Limhouse. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for citizens to come and to express their concerns about county-related business before council. Since it is before our meeting, we do limit it to 15 members, the first 15 members who signed up, and you will have two minutes. So when I call your name, if you will please come forward and state your name and give us your address. And then if you'll kindly pay attention to the screen, the screen to either the left or the right as you're looking, it will give you a warning when there's a few seconds left, and then it'll go to red. If you can kindly cut off your comments so that I don't have to, I would much appreciate that. And if we'll keep the comments to not calling out or personal attacks, and let's keep the civil, very much appreciate that as well. And finally, the only other thing I'll say is if you signed up, we do have a full 15 folks who signed up tonight. If you're here to speak about anything that is a public hearing item, which we have several public hearing matters, I want you to understand that you can wait until then and speak, and you are not going to be cut off or limited to two minutes. This is solely for the two minutes at the outset. So if you prefer to yield your time and wait for the public hearing item to approach council and to speak, you won't be limited at that time. First up is Chris Montgomery.
Good evening. I'm Chris Montgomery. Address is 5830 Campbell Road. I am here to speak about item number five on the agenda. And we are not against the school's request, what they're requesting to be done. What we're against is there's a difference of opinion in whether it's a minor or a major modification. Our opinion is a minor. County staff's opinion is a major. And the difference would be, a major has to have everyone within the PD sign off on any changes. Then it would go to county staff, and then, of course, to the council to go through three reasons. Our opinion, what needed to be done has already been done as far as a major modification would be. We did a second modification back in 2010. So what's in question here for us isn't an issue with what the school's trying to do. It's how it's being done. And if indeed other changes are allowed to move forward in this classification of a major change, then that would allow any one person within the planned development to not sign an agreement and kill another developer's chance of moving forward with any of their plans. So we're 100% with the school and what they're trying to do. We just disagree with the guidance they've had as far as the process goes. If it's a minor change, it's simply between the school, their engineers, and county staff. So that's where the difference of opinion on what sort of change the school's asking for.
Thank you, sir.
And that's it.
Thank you, sir. John J. Mattingly.
Thank you for letting me speak. John J. Mattingly, 1384 East Alexander Love Highway, York. I have run Mighty Motors at the same address for over 30 years. I was fully approved under UD Section 5.7 in 1993 to operate as a repair, sales, and towing operation. Zoning approval contracts are like marriage vows. They're supposed to be intended to be permanent. Fast forward 25 complaint-free years, March 2022, York County Planning and Development presents York County with a seven-inch-thick stack of new zoning reforms that were given a week to review the hundreds of revisions. Council follows the planning department recommendation and approves, being assured that existing compliant businesses and residents will be grandfathered. Fast forward to 2023, code enforcement begins aggressive enforcement of the new regulations, retroactive, claiming that the new rules apply to the old zoning contracts. Suddenly, our old marriage vows are being revised. Here's the new rules, honey. Now, UD allows no overnight parking, no unregistered vehicles, no vehicles to remain over 30 days. Any violations are deemed to be salvaged. I am supposed to make a report of every vehicle on my premises, make, model, year, when it arrived, what the problem is, who the owner is, and whether it's legally tagged. UD restrictions are now toxic to my business. Furthermore, code enforcement claims to have lost all my original approvals and wants me to pay to reapply for zoning so I can ask to be grandfathered. I have copies of my original approvals. I should be grandfathered automatically. I shouldn't have to apply for anything. This also violates Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution, ex post facto. I have been forced to hire legal counsel. I have been forced to take tremendous losses to sell vehicles I intended to restore, and forced to take hundreds of hours away from productive work to comply with these regulations that should not apply. They're literally trying to shut down my 30-year-old veteran-owned business on Veterans Day.
Thank you, sir.
Request your assistance, please.
Thank you, sir. Sheila Quinn.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sheila Quinn, Superintendent of Clover School District located at 604 Bethel Street in Clover, South Carolina. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, I would like to formally thank Mr. Montgomery, who spoke first tonight, and all of the pod owners who are a part of the Allison Creek Development Agreement, including the county, for their support of the amendment to the planned development as it relates narrowly to Pod 4. Pod 4 is the site owned by Clover School District and the location of the voter-approved Bond Project, which many of you know is a second high school. It is also the site of an eighth elementary school approved by the Board of Trustees. We have been working diligently with the county to complete all requirements for site approval so that we may obtain a permit to construct. For the better part of eight months, one of the major problems we have centered on is the county's interpretation of the phrase in the planned development that our pod must have a connection to West Liberty Hill Road. Staff has interpreted the word "connection" to meet a full-access public road between West Liberty Hill and Daimler. This would, in effect, put a public road going through the middle of two schools. Aside from the fact that we do not agree with that interpretation of the word "connection," we also do not feel this is a safe option, and it presents significant problems for the traffic impact analysis on West Liberty Hill Road. Unfortunately, after months of trying, we have exhausted all opportunities to resolve this matter internally, and we need the help of the council. We appreciate the council's consideration to remove this obstacle by deleting the requirement to connect West Liberty Hill Road altogether. It is what the neighbors adjacent to our site would prefer. It is certainly what is best for our traffic flow and safety on our school site. Additionally, this minor change impacts no other pod owners around us. This month, we will be resubmitting our site plan for approval for the third time. We appreciate the opportunity to get this resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ronnie Taylor.
Ronnie Taylor, 1411 Lincoln Road, York, South Carolina. I'm here today to invite y'all to the York County Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony. It's this Saturday, November 11. It falls on Veterans Day this year. We made an agreement with York County when we transferred the property over to York County that we would get the day closest to Veterans Day. This year, it falls on November 11. Like I tell you every year, welcome to be in the parade. If you want a ride, you need to bring a car or a golf cart or something. This year, Manning Kimball is going to be our guest speaker with WRHI Radio in Rock Hill. We've got a 103-year-old World War II veteran. It's going to be the grand marshal. And I promise you, this year, if you come, you've never heard anybody sing the National Anthem as young as this one. She's four years old. I think it's going to be something pretty nice. Like I say, if you don't want to be in a parade, you're welcome to get in. Just come to the service. The parades, we're going to gather at 9:30 at 60 North Congress Street, which is Dickerson Motors. Parade starts sharply at 10. Once we get down to the York County Veterans Memorial Park, we're going to start the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Greg Blackwell.
Good evening. Greg Blackwell, 217 Bald Cypress Drive, Clover, South Carolina, 29710. Thank y'all for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you today. I'm a member of the York County Flyers RC Club, and this is in regard to the possible sale of our flying site on the old landfill to the city of York. My family and I have lived in York County for 25 years. During my 41-year career as an airline mechanic, I've lived in the metro Atlanta and Winston-Salem areas prior to relocating here. Building and flying radio-controlled aircraft with my father as a child was instrumental in my chosen profession. I've been involved in the RC aircraft hobby as family obligations allowed for most of my adult life, as are my children today. Every place I've lived has provided their local RC Clubs publicly-supported facilities in which to operate. In Atlanta, it was the Atlanta RC Club. We flew at dedicated facility operated and maintained by the DeKalb County Department of Parks and Recreation on Constitution Avenue. That facility has been in continuous operation since the 1960s. In Winston-Salem, I was a member of Hobby Park RCers, and we flew at the Winston-Salem Hobby Park on Clemensville Road operated and maintained by the City of Winston-Salem and the Forsyth County Department of Parks and Recreation. That facility has been in continuous operation since the 1970s. York County Flyers have been operating on the old landfill on Langer Branch Road since the 1980s. We have maintained the property ourselves at no cost to the county for the enjoyment of our hobby. We have been good stewards and good neighbors, supporting and contributing to many charitable organizations, schools, and public efforts in York County throughout our tenure, asking little in return except to be allowed a place to enjoy our chosen pastime. I've come this evening to ask you to consider our current needs and long relationship with York County in your decision as to the future plans for our facility at the landfill. We have need of a relatively large tract of land to pursue our hobby, and the landfill has and does suit our needs. If not there, then where? If, in fact, the sale of facility is imminent and unavoidable, the York County Flyers would like to implore the council to assist us in locating and relocating to a suitable new site elsewhere in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard Maury.
Richard Maury, 1655 Litchfield Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm a retired American Airlines captain and co-founder of the David Griffith Aviation Foundation. I'm a 32-year resident of York County and reside in Newport. I'm speaking in favor of keeping the York County Flyers field. York County Flyers are a pillar in this community. Some of their projects are fundraisers for hospice and the David Griffith Aviation Foundation. David Griffith Aviation Foundation was founded to allow young people to learn how to fly in the age 15 to 19 years old. We have donated, we have a donated airplane and volunteer instructors. To date, we have had five private pilots. Three have gone on to college to continue their further aspirations of a professional career. One has gone into the Air Force to become an air traffic controller, and one has done it for the pure joy of flying. We have three students currently involved in the program right now. I just retired from a 40-year airline career in June when I retired at the mandatory age of 65, and we got a lot of them. So that reads the point is, I started with model airplanes. First, plastic kits led to control line flying, and then RC. I started flying sailplanes at 13, sold it at 14, the minimum age, and went on to get my commercials at 18 in both power and gliders. All that started with models. STEM STEAM is the buzzword in education these days. Well, here is the perfect example available to you. This is not a video game. Flying RC teaches real-time perspective and spatial orientation, how to manage energy, structural analysis, and more. One of our most promising students at David Griffith came from York County Flyers. He had a leg up because he understands the concept of flight. Learning to fly is not like learning to drive a car. It is college-level work, both in the classroom and in the air. It takes roughly one year to get a rating. You see York County Flyers and David Griffith Aviation go hand in hand. And in closing, any plan for recreation in York must include a model airplane airplane.
Thank you, sir. Gerald McBurney.
Gerald McBurney, 2861 Bush Road, Clover, South Carolina. I'm here because I would like to have you folks make a fully informed decision regards to the flying field for the York Flyers. I represent the David Griffith Aviation Foundation and the Rock Hill Flyers also. I'm one of the instructors who works with the youth there. We offer an opportunity for young people who have a dream in aviation that normally can't afford it to achieve their dreams. They learn to fly for about one quarter or less of the normal cost of learning to fly. We operate that way because we have generous donors. The York County Flyers, some of those donors, they've given very generously to us. Beyond that, they are also a conduit for new students for our organization. York County Flyers members have been industrious. They've taken a landfill, and they've developed infrastructure on it to make a flying facility that's very attractive. They've been considerate. They've been civic-minded. They want to have this field for a place that's safe and that is not an obstacle for the neighbors. And they've been youth-supported. As I mentioned, they've offered an entryway into the aviation world for our youth. They've supported us financially. We have a synergistic relationship with the York County Flyers and the Rock Hill Flyers. We've had people there from their organization enter our field and go on to be pilots. These folks are model citizens. They're generous, industrious, considerate, civic-minded, and youth-supporting. These are exactly the kind of people we want our youth associated with. Please don't punish them by taking away their field. Let me ask that you would keep it for years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doug Cipral. I want to make sure everybody's comments are heard, too, but I didn't want to interrupt. If you'll make sure to speak into the mic. It's having a hard time hearing you.
Doug Cipral. I live at 174 Woodwind Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I am one of the founding and original members of the York County Flyers. We have been active at our flying site now since 19... We have been active at our flying site now since 1987. I worked with then-county attorney Mike Hendry to establish the agreement that the York County Flyers has with York County for exclusive use of the flying site there on Langham Branch Road. I also worked with attorney Mike Hendry when we, the club, reviewed and renewed that agreement on December 2017. The York County Flyers Model Airplane Club is more than just a hobby club. It is a fully functional recreation facility for people both interested in and actively flying radio-controlled model aircraft. Our sanctioning organization is the Academy of Model Aeronautics, better known as AMA. They're a nationwide organization. In fact, they've recognized the York County Flyers last year as their Club of the Month. And that's a recognition, a recognition based on flying activities, interaction with York County, and the availability of RC activities to a wide age range of flyers. Whereas the age range runs between pre-teens and senior citizens and retirees, the majority of our membership consists of flyers 40 years of age or older. The York County Flyers has performed demonstrations and presentations to several of the local schools over the years, and presently endorses and contributes to the David Griffith Aviation Foundation at the Rock Hill County Airport. The foundation is founded on the private pilot's license training, as you've already heard. The York County Flyers has also provided financial donations to support hospice and community care in York County, and that's in memory of those members who, as we say, we have said, have taken their final flights and whose family members have benefited from hospice assistance. We'd like to believe that York County Flyers is a feather in the cap for York County, and we're a very well-known RC club, some 140 members strong. We'd like to continue to fly at our Langham Branch site. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Philip Howard. Philip Howard. Do I need to wait? Okay. We have Zach Limhouse next. I know you spoke previously. Did he leave? He left? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on. We'll make sure if he comes in here, we'll move towards him. I think this is Steve Boudrein. Sorry about that.
That's okay. No problem. Steve Boudreaux, 101 Cherokee Drive, Clover. Little bit of background on me. Retired Air Force guy, enlisted, worked for the airlines now. I'm a pilot. I just joined York County Flyers Club. I'm highly involved in the community in aviation in Rock Hill. I still do current instruction. And I'm here in regards to the land there at the York County Flyers Club. Understand that, you know, it's possibly could, could be gone. I see that as a detriment. I also teach Air Force ROTC at the Clover High School. I really enjoy that. Some of the kids that are there are involved at the York County Flyers Club. It gives them the opportunity to see what aviation's like. Not only that, when I'm teaching in the class, I don't just tell them about the Air Force, the Army, and all the flying they can do. I also tell them about so many of the things that they can do. So when they come out to the club, there's not just people out there that know how to fly RC airplanes. There's people out there that are on all walks of life. They could be engineers, they could be culinary arts, they could be anything like that. Since being a part of this club, which has been roughly a month, almost everybody that out there, that is out there are just wonderful people. I'd hate to see this go, and the reason I'd hate to see it go is because it gives the opportunity for young people, old people, retired people, people like me. This is something that I just started, and I learned how to do this when I, or I learned how to do it when I was very young, and then it actually got me involved in aviation. So I please ask that you would consider keeping this land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Goodwin Thomas.
My name's Goody Thomas, and I'm from Rock Hill, South Carolina. And when I, I thought I was signing in. I didn't know I was signing in to speak. So I come up with some comments that are, comments that involve a long-term association with the York County Flyers. In 1983, actually, to 1985, there was a county council member named Colwell Baron. And Colwell Baron and my dad, Goody Thomas Senior, were kind of instrumental in acquiring that piece of property out there as a land site for a flying club. And at that point, it was not a very large flying club, but it's something that added to the aviation history in York County. Bob Bryant, who you all know, started aviation history in York County. And the Rock Hill and York County Flying Club is able to put together a club that teaches young people, kids, the principles of aviation. The gentleman who just spoke learned a lot of his aviation basics, flying radio-controlled airplanes. My son, who is right now in Dallas upgrading to captain, started in York County Rock Hill Flyers when he was 12 years old. He learned his basic aviation skills there. And the interesting thing was, one of the airplanes that he built and flew was called an Extra 330. And an Extra 330 is a high-performance aerobatic airplane. As a result of those basic skills that he learned, he actually made the United States Aerobatic Team and flew in five national, five world championships. So the fact that young kids can go to a place and learn basic aviation skills, take those skills into a career, is very important. So the York County Flyers having access to a piece of property is good for aviation in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I cannot read this first name. It starts with a G, but the last name is Wilson.
Scotty Wilson.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
He was clear on that.
We have Jennifer Smith.
Hi, Jennifer Smith, 2578 Enchanta Road, York. I'm here representing my 14-year-old son, who is a member of the York County Flyers Club. This is a great opportunity because it provides a safe location for the kids to fly and learn how to fly RC airplanes. It also provides them an opportunity to build mentorship with the older community who are RC flyers. It gives them the opportunity to learn how to fly safely and to enjoy the hobby. The FAA has recently released some new rules that make it extremely difficult for people to fly in non-sanctioned areas. And in York County, because of Duke Energy and the proximity of the air for, or of the airplanes, it is even harder for you to have an area to fly. The York Flyers Club has denoted with the FAA safety zone for them to fly in. If you take this away from them, they won't have that opportunity to fly in York County, and you will thus take away the opportunity for a lot of young children and teenagers to have the opportunity to learn to fly and enjoy a hobby. All I'm asking is that you consider letting the York County Flyers stay there, and if you cannot, for some reason, work with them closely to find a location that would be suitable for them to continue, to offer this as an activity for young children in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public forum session. All that signed up have, have called their name. We move now to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. We will move now to our public hearings. First item up is rezoning action number one. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 23-26, tax map number 456000111 to rezone from RSF 30 to NC, 1.97 acres in District 2. Mr. Pono?
Yes, this application is at the intersection of Param Road and Charlotte Highway, just under two acres for neighborhood commercial from the RSF 30 district. So this application is before you, instigated by a code enforcement case that was opened in April of 2022. There are a couple of citations there. There was an ongoing commercial use that is currently in litigation. The rezoning would resolve that aspect of the case. A shipping trailer, which was resolved. And there's a litter maintenance nuisance violation, which is much improved, but still ongoing, and that's in court as well. That would not be resolved by the rezoning application. The applicant is requesting to rezone to neighborhood commercial to allow what he describes as an ice cream machine sales and repair business to remain. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning to neighborhood commercial. It's got some alignment with the comp plan and the future land use map. It's not technically designated as a commercial node, but the intersection here has the characteristics of a commercial node, of a rural commercial node. It has existing non-residential uses at some of the other quadrants of the intersection, a church and a landscape supply facility, and it's at the major road intersection of Charlotte Highway and Param. Neighborhood commercial does not allow auto-oriented uses, and it has building size limitations, so it's a more appropriate district than a general commercial would be. By a seven to zero vote, Planning Commission likewise recommended approval.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff before we move to public hearing? Mr. Roddy.
If we made this, if we designated this a neighborhood commercial, what are some of the other uses that could locate there if this particular business went out of business in 10, 20 years?
Yeah, they would be your traditional neighborhood-serving uses, so personal services, things like, you know, hair salons, things like that. You'd be able to have restaurants of a certain scale. They'd have to be limited in their size. So a lot of the lower intensity commercial uses. You're not going to have the big box retail would not be able to locate there.
So this, I see, just started over 18 months ago, trying to get this up to, to proper zoning. Has it made a drastic improvement, or has improvement been slow?
Yeah, so the code enforcement case that's associated with this, it's been in court for a while. The judge has granted several continuances to make progress on both this application and in terms of cleaning up the property, the nuisance violation that's there. So it's ongoing, but there has been a substantial improvement from the litter perspective there. There's still an area that needs to be resolved. But in terms of the zoning violations, the only one left is the commercial use of the property, and rezoning to this district would resolve that.
So what is the building size limitation for neighborhood commercial?
I believe the cumulative building size would be 30,000 square feet. Getting a nod.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, real quick, Jonathan. So looking at where this is located, are there other businesses that are close to this, this property here?
If you see the aerial here, there's a landscape supply facility that's across the street there, and there's also not a business, but non-residential use there, a church on the other side of Param.
Okay, so it's a church. It kind of kitty-cooters a business and a church.
That's right.
Okay. And the other question I have, there was mention of, of past zoning. Can you expand on that a little bit? I think the gentleman presented questions around past zoning for this location. Was there past zoning that got, didn't get grandfathered? I, I'm just curious of...
The speaker earlier tonight is not associated with this case.
It's not associated with this one? Okay, so this is separate one. Okay.
Is that an additional driveway that's going from one parcel to the next, and do they own that adjacent parcel as well?
Yes, when this was originally constructed, it was approved as an accessory structure for the dwelling on the adjacent part, property.
The current owner owns both, both properties?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes. How is the adjacent property zoned? Is it RSF 30?
Yep, so as you'll see in the gold color here, all of that is RSF 30. The yellow color is RSF 40. The dark green color there is AGC.
All right. And then follow-up question. With the code violation, if we approve the rezone, or we have first reading to approve, what happens with code violations?
So the zoning violation, that aspect of the case would be null prost, and then the nuisance violation would be ongoing until it's resolved.
And then, other than the notes that you have that you've shared with council tonight, what other reasons were you considering not to recommend this for rezoning? Were there any other reasons that would help us make a decision tonight?
Maybe I'm misunderstanding the question. We are recommending approval.
I know you are.
Okay.
But what did you discuss that may have caused you not to approve it, if anything, other than what you have written in your notes?
Sure, if you're looking for some of the, the counterpoints to rezoning this property...
Yes, please.
So you don't have the presence of other neighborhood commercial in the immediate vicinity. That's something that you might look for. Certainly, the comp plan doesn't show this as a commercial node. So while it doesn't officially have it in the plan as a commercial node, like I stated earlier, it has the characteristics of one in practical terms. But if you were reading the comp plan as a strict guide, you would say that this is not a commercial node, therefore, we should not rezone it commercially.
Jonathan, is the landscaping place, are they still in business?
I don't know the status of their business.
I don't think they are.
I do have one more question. So when this came before the Planning Commission, their first vote was a unanimous no. What, what changed their vote? I know there was an executive session after that vote, but what would have changed their, their vote, their recommendation?
Their initial motion was to approve with a condition that the nuisance violation be resolved, and then they went into executive session, and as you stated, they dropped that condition and just moved forward with the recommendation to approve. I don't know what changed.
One more, one more question.
Mr. Roddy.
Aren't we currently in discussion with, if there are current violations on the property of us holding up any rezoning or approvals for something like this? Where are we at on that? Because if I remember correctly, if there are current violations on the property, and I think we're in the middle of it now, we turned it down, that we said we wanted some of the current violations taken care of before we approved the rezoning.
Yes, sir. So currently, the code reads that if you have a zoning violation, you can't move forward on a rezoning application. We did have a draft proposal considered by council to expand that to include other types of property violations, a nuisance violation being one of them, but council declined to adopt that at first reading.
So we don't have that policy in effect right now, that we can hold this rezoning up until they take care of the other issues that we have with this problem?
Correct.
So I'm clear, the landscape, one of the reasons why Planning Commission and staff recommended approval is because of the church and the landscape supply facility. So the landscape supply facility is in an AGC designation. Is that allowed?
It is.
And, and are they operational now?
I don't know their current status, as far as I know they are.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for staff? I see hands out here. We're going to open up the public hearing, and you'll have a chance to speak when I, when I open up public hearing. But any other questions for staff before we move to the public hearing?
Well, if this gentleman, Jonathan, is operating a small business, this is the only way he can resolve this, correct?
That's correct, because he's currently in a residential district, and he cannot have the commercial use without rezoning.
Any other questions? All right, we're going to move now and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? If you do, if you'll come forward, state your name, and give your address, and proceed with your comments.
My name's William Glenn. I live at 1832 Param Road.
I live at 1832 Param Road, right adjacent to Jeff's property. When everybody in that neighborhood moved from that section under York Farms, it was all considered and in the thing, and we all bought it because it was retroactive. No business. That was on the thing where everybody signed and bought land. I got six acres. The lady that had it for Jeff, she had five acres. She wouldn't sell it to me. And my neighbors, they got six acres. We are really concerned on what's going to move on that corner and going to kill that neighborhood. And we already got neighbors talking about leaving. I've been there 44 years, 75 years old now, and I don't want business in that section.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If you, anybody wants to speak, if you'll just step up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Mike Cowick. My mom and dad lived at 7591 Charlotte Highway together since 1968. My dad died on September 25th of this year at 89. I became, along with my brother Steve Cowick, personal representatives for that estate. I'm here on behalf of that tonight. I'm also here because my mom in 91 told me to come. She's very concerned about what's going on. Let me tell you a little bit of history about that tract of land. My mom was a love. She was one of the loves from over in the Bullocks Creek area. In 1938, my grandfather Jake Brady Love moved from Bullocks Creek to that crossroads. He bought on both sides of Param Road going toward Rock Hill. He farmed cotton there, he farmed cows, and he farmed peaches on about 80 acres. My mom was raised up there. When my mom got married to my dad, they made it their plan to have two boys, which they did, and they wanted to move back to where she grew up, and she wanted those boys to have the experience of growing up in a rural area. When we moved back in 1968, if you, like Ken and Millie, are going out of York toward Charlotte, starting there until you got what I call Ferguson's Mount, I guess they call it Liberty Hill now, going through that Bethel community, there were three family rural stores, country stores. None of those exist today. Unlike lots of parts of York County, this area is going back to seed in a good way, where there's things that used to be open, no longer exist, because it's not that far to drive to York, Newport, Clover, or even over to Lake Wally. And so what I ask you to do is to think about, families live there, I've got cousins, I've got aunts, now all dead, gone, but a family lives there, and they're still attached to that land. It's not just us, it's the folks over here that are attached to that property, folks that worked there, had farms there, raised kids there. I want to bring my family back here. I want to raise my grandson, who's now two and a half years old, right there fishing on that pond, alert to fish in. Talking about commercial operations, I mentioned there are no stores. The nursery is closing. I came to visit my mom today, and they're dismantling the nursery. They've sold it to somebody that wants to take it back to be in a residential home. So what you're getting ready to do is put a church there and no other business, and then this is going to be zoned such that if it decides, we don't know what it's going to turn out to be in long term. And again, that area, people, it's not just people that have been there a long time. If you go look at the Timbers, you look at Campbell's Crossroads, you look all up and down the Charlotte Highway, and again, I call it Highway 49, I apologize, is those are people moving here to raise their children because of great schools and what that rural area provides out there, boy, of opportunity. There are letters, I believe, in your files from others around my mom and dad's home, now my mom's home, that wrote, they feel comfortable coming tonight. I believe they're from the Timbers, I believe they're from, they're in that area. I believe you've got some from Campbell's Crossing, that are concerned about changing the character of this rural area. Again, if you come down Highway 274, Charlotte Highway, and you turn right and go by Liberty Hill, Ferguson's Mount, all of a sudden, things are very different than what's in Lake Wally, and we sure would like to keep it that way. I appreciate your consideration very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Linda Jones. I live at 1851 South Param Road, and I just would like to speak about the rezoning. When we purchased the land, as my neighbor stated, it was for the purpose of residential. And each change that was made on the two lots adjacent to 49 had to be approved by the community that purchased that area. The church that came to the area at that time had to be signed off by those who purchased the land during that period. Now, if we change, now we're afraid that the future would bring congestion. The man that purchased the land, it's no congestion of traffic, it's no other than appearances, but he stated that he would clean it up. But the thing of it is, who would move there once he leave this area? Will it be congested for the church and the community? Because they stated to us when we purchased this land, that it had to be something that would benefit the community. A small business, such as a floral shop, like I say, a hairdresser, but something that was not a large commercial, that would change the flavor of the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Harris Joe. I was in this area for about 44 years. I live at 1851 Param Road. I, I know the individual that lived on the corner there. He's a fine man. I had dealer with him. But the problem I have with that area, it became very soiled. We get out there, we saw Joe, he wouldn't cut the grass, and had all kinds of stuff laying around, okay? Then he cleaned up a little bit. Then he said he want to get some power, to open up his business, so he can maybe work for three or four years, and he's going to give it up. But that's the scary part about it. If you rezon that area, and he decide he don't want to work three or four years, and then he sell it, he's going to be sold for business. Now, I don't know what they're going to bring, and none of us know what the future's going to bring, but we cannot afford to take that chance, because we raise a family in that area. I have three great kids. They live there, the community, the community is very, very good. We built a church on the corner. The traffic cut down, we had a lot of people hanging around drinking beer, ballers, and doing all kinds of things that shouldn't be done in that area. We cleaned it up. We cleaned it up, and you know yourself, each one of you know yourself. We all need to be disciplined, all our kids. We all need to know where our kids are at night, and we all need to know what going on in our community. So when you make your decision, think about us who have homes here. Think about us who have a church on the corner. Try to bring in people with Christian values, not money value. Now, I believe money is a very, very trouble, but you need to have moral values as well. So think about that, please, when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? If you'll step up and move forward? I'm not seeing any others. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
I am Emily Brown. My address is 454 South Anderson Roads, Suite 211, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29730. I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the property owner, Jeff Solana, and I appreciate this opportunity to tell you a little bit more about Mr. Solana's business and the property here. So this is a picture of the property from Param Road. This is from across the street at the church. Just to give you a little bit of history, the county approved this building permit for this building in 2001. Mr. Solana began building this building himself. He went through all of the required processes to have engineers check the concrete and do everything that he needed to do at the time to construct this building. In 2004, he received a very short letter from the planning department. All it said was that they were going to withdraw the permit and not allow him to connect electricity because of building and code violations. It didn't say what those violations were, and didn't say how to correct them. And he was unable at the time to find out how to correct those violations despite following up. So he, at the time, did not have this ice cream business, and so he since then has started to operate this ice cream business and utilize the property for storage, which is exactly what the building permit said he was going to use the property for. In 2018, he did receive notice from the county about another violation, and at the time, they said, oh, you need to rezon the property. And that was the first time that he was told in 14 years that what he needed to do is rezon the property. And so in 2018, that's what they recommended, and then he received another violation in 2022, and it became clear that he really needed to get a handle on this property and fix these zoning issues. So you asked about the zoning violations. There was a zoning violation for shipping container that has been removed and resolved. There was a violation for a transfer truck trailer, also removed and resolved. And then he has done a significant amount of work. I'm going to show you some current photos to handle the debris issue on the property as well. The only thing that is remaining is this zoning violation that the rezoning could cure. So Mr. Solana operates an ice cream and shake business, so most of his work is actually done off-site. You go somewhere like Dairy Queen or Five Guys, you get a milkshake, ice cream from the big machines. Mr. Solana goes all over the southeast repairing those machines. About once a month or so, he gets a new machine delivered to his property that he then takes out and installs on location. And occasionally, not very often, he also gets some other machines in that he then refurbishes and takes to clients. So there's very little onsite work that goes on, primarily storing some tools, some parts, and then some of these machines that he gets in. So these are some current pictures of the site, just to show you how the violations have been resolved and how much better the site looks today than it even did, you know, 30 days or six weeks ago. Mr. Solana has done a lot of work. The goal here is to get complete continued compliance and to not have to revisit this issue that he's been dealing with since 2001. So to show you a little bit about surrounding property, I marked Mr. Solana's property on here, and as you can see, across Param Road is a church, and this is, there's a stoplight at this intersection. There is actually quite a bit of traffic that comes through this intersection. And there's his property across the street is the landscaping business. As we understand from a neighbor, the landscaping business has been sold, but there is someone moving in there that intends to occupy one of those buildings as an office use of some So we're asking that you approve this as a neighborhood commercial use. Planning staff said, you know, this is an appropriate use for this area, considering the traffic, the surrounding uses. Neighborhood commercial is a very low-intensity kind of use, and this is a two-acre lot. That is really going to limit the amount of commercial use that you actually have on the property, because there is going to have to be parking, there will have to be appropriate buffers, all of the things related to a commercial use is going to have to be implemented on this property if the rezoning is approved. Also, this is going to help achieve, you know, basically continued compliance, so that this property won't be an issue in the future. And it will allow Mr. Solana to improve the property. You know, at this point in time, he can't complete this building. He's basically put up some wood to block the doors because he wasn't allowed to complete it. This will allow him to complete the building. He'll also have to then submit a commercial site plan and install the improvements that the zoning code would require for commercial use. I mean, this building already exists on the property, it was already approved by York County, and so, you know, Mr. Solana is just asking that you approve the zoning that's going to be appropriate for him to, you know, utilize this building and continue to operate his business, because if he can't continue to operate his business at this point in time, he does not have another place to do so. We do have a few letters from some neighboring property owners who are supportive tonight, and then there's someone here as well tonight who's in support of this.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Curtis Tillman. I live at 7668 Charlotte Highway. I'm just two doors down. I speak for myself and my neighbor on the northeast side, which is Chris and Jennifer Cobb. I've lived there, actually, I helped Jeff build that building. I've been there for 24 years, and Jeff and I, when we first met, we helped each other out. I'm an electrical engineer. I actually work out of Charlotte. And Jeff's a good guy. The only reason why he's in trouble right now is because he has a big heart, and he was trying to help another business who was going through some rough times. That's how some of this began, because he put stuff in there, you know, some restaurant equipment, and stored it for him, and that's when some of the violations began. But, you know, Jeff, you know, I'll stand up for him, he's a good guy, like the other guy said. You know, I think that he's been fighting this for many years, and like I said originally, you know, there was not a lot of information that was given him. You know, I help him out when I can, and, you know, basically, all of us that live along 49 are behind Jeff for you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close public hearing? Motion in a second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to deny. A second.
We have a motion in a second to deny the request. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Roddy?
Yes, when I first saw this over the weekend, and I got a call, before I had a chance to look at anything, I thought it was a rezoning, an auto building, and now to hear some of the backstory of what's going on. First, we permitted the building to go up in 2001. So from 2001 to 2023, if something wasn't right, why didn't we, and I say we, why didn't staff? Oh, got to get my mic on. How did we let this go on for so long? And if, what I heard correctly, what I heard early was that the neighbors had to kind of get together to vote what was going to come into their neighborhood. And my question, is there a deed restriction anywhere on these properties in this area near the property in question? Is there anything about a deed restriction?
Not aware of any.
So they're within their right to ask for a rezoning?
As far as I understand.
Or any deed restriction? And on one corner, we have a church, one corner, we have a former landscaping business. Is that correct? So even if we don't rezone this, the building's still going to be there. What kind of, what's the next step? Are we going to ask this gentleman to tear down this building?
No, so when the permit was originally issued, it was issued as a residential accessory structure. In fact, on the permit, it says not for commercial purposes, language to that effect. So it would have to be vacated with the commercial use, and it could continue to be used as a residential accessory structure.
So storage makes it commercial?
Yeah, so the storage of commercial equipment that he's ferrying to... Yeah, so the storage of commercial equipment that he's ferrying to and from the site, yeah.
So someone that was working, let's say if this was a garage on someone's property, now we're working on a car here or there as a, as a home business or personal business, would we, would he have to rezone to neighborhood commercial if he was working on several cars a month?
It depends on each case like that is different, and it's based on the facts of that particular case and the general description of, you know, someone working on cars in their driveway or their garage. If they are doing it for commercial purposes, they are a commercial business. You've got people coming to your site. You've got equipment and things like that coming to your site. It's not allowed in a residential district. So if you're doing it as your personal hobby and your personal stuff, that's, that's different, but that's not what's occurring here.
So is there a sign out front that says whatever ice cream repair shop?
I don't believe he has a sign though.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be curious to know what, what our next steps are going to be with this individual if we say no. The building's going to be still there. What are the options at that point? Obviously, you know, we, we don't too fast turn down things at first reading. But if it's that council members will in their district, I just think it's, it's a lot. It's very intriguing that this has been going on since 2001. That's kind of really concerning. But I saw some pictures earlier. If there's a struggle to keep the property clean from debris and violations, that, that kind of speaks to what we're going to deal with if we do rezon it. Are we still going to have those issues of keeping it clean, meeting certain codes? So I just wanted to ask those questions. I know things, things are going to change at certain intersections, and it looks to me that this is probably one that, if this was in between two residential houses, it would make it easy to say no. But obviously, at an intersection, something's going to eventually come there. And maybe it needs to go back through the community to protect those neighbors who made that vow to stick together and vote on what comes to that neighborhood. Because it sounds like they voted when the church came. And that's a very reliable process. It's not really an official process because this body is always, obviously charged with making those zoning changes. But we do like to respect the wishes of the neighbors when they come forward to say, this is what we agreed to. We purchased our homes for in a residential area. But just know, things are changing, and we all like to go back to those same neighborhoods that we grew up in 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago. But some things are going to change. But I have no problem letting the neighbors decide what's going to come in their backyards. But I did want to put it out that something's going to change at this intersection because we already see a church. You guys voted a church there. There's a former nursery there. So just be mindful that we're not always going to have that country of rural feel in a growing community like we have here. I'll, I'll stick with the council member whose district it is and respect her wishes if she wants to deny it. And I'll, I'll support that as well.
Does this building have power currently?
Not immediately aware, but getting a gesture that it does not.
It was mentioned in 2004, they pulled the permit. Sounded like before there was power, so there may not be power.
Our public hearing is closed now, so unfortunately, the time to speak would have been, when I said, when it's time to have anybody who was, yeah, in favor of the rezoning would have, should have spoken at the public hearing stage.
Okay, so assuming that this building has to remain for residential use, I'm guessing that they're not going to meet the requirements for yet residential use in its current shape and form. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then Councilman Roddy asked about deed restrictions. I'd, I'd kind of like to know the original owner of the land, did they have deed restrictions that restricted it to residential use? Because that was very common years ago when people sold property, parcels of property, they had deed restrictions. So I'd like to know the answer to that.
I don't have one for you now, but we can certainly research to see if there's historical deeds placed on the property that are still in effect.
So, um, believe it or not, I was represented, I was elected to represent the people in this area. And this is the far corner of District 2. I put so much time and effort into the comprehensive plan for this area because every little piece of District 2 is very important, not just to me, but to the people who live all the way out to every corner of District 2. So my, my district shrunk a little bit, and this is, this is where it, it's where it begins. So I put a lot of effort into that comprehensive plan, meeting with staff and, and discussing every part of that. I don't just look at it and say, okay, this is okay and this is okay. We, we go from corner to corner. So it's, it's very disheartening to me. I love when people come to a council meeting. I love it because I want you to be involved. But I don't want you to be involved because you have to worry about what your little neck of the woods is going to become. So when the counts, when the county staff says that something is somewhat consistent with a plan that I've put hours and hours into and you've put heart and soul into in real life, we do not need to water that down ever, ever do we need to water that down. The gentleman said everybody along Highway 49 is behind them. Yeah, they might be behind them. They might live behind them, but they are not behind them in this decision tonight because I've talked to many people. I've talked to people who are reluctant to come tonight, people who are reluctant to send emails and speak up, but they're sitting at home waiting and wondering and worried about what's going to happen on this corner. This corner is, was not in a comprehensive plan. It was not determined that this should be a, any kind of commercial node. So it really is bothersome to me to have somebody. First of all, let me say this. Be careful what you complain about with your neighbors because somebody had to complain probably to get the county back out there. So just be careful what you wish for, folks. So when somebody complains and the county goes out, and then they say, well, you know, the way to fix this is to rezone it. This is not about the past and the history of this property. It's about the future of this property. And one of the things that, listen, I, I mean, I've been called a tree hugger a couple times. And I have hooked a few trees, but I hugged them goodbye, right? But even more important than that to me was the lighting ordinance that we passed. And when you imagine this lot, right now, it doesn't even have electricity. So he can't even turn on a light on the corner of this building. But when we rezone this to commercial, you're going to have lights on probably all night long. That impacts everybody in an area like this. And you might be thinking this is close to Lake Wylie. But, but in, in the way that people live right here is as far as Lake Wylie as you can go. This is not Lake Wylie. This is York, South Carolina. And this corner does not need to be rezoned for commercial. And when you talk about a 30,000 square foot building that could go there, well, first of all, I would like to see a 30,000 square foot hair salon, number one. I can't imagine. But if we rezone this, we're putting a sore thumb at a beautiful intersection on Highway 49. And I, I just, you know, the landscape supply, that, that lot is closing this month. It's not going to be a landscape supply. But even as a landscape supply, it was a very simple landscape supply. With a chain link fence, well, it didn't even have a chain link fence for a long time. I think it's got the fence around it there, but it was just plants. I mean, it was just plants sitting out there in their little black buckets. It wasn't like a formal landscape business. It was just a simple thing that somebody probably started on that corner. The church that's there, I, I hate to think that when we say that something is somewhat consistent and we're willing to change that to commercial because of a church. Let me tell you, there are a lot of rural churches throughout South Carolina. And if that's the philosophy that we have, that something is somewhat consistent, does that mean that we can put a Dollar General beside a church out in Smyrna or Hickory Grove or District 5 just because it's already started with a church? That's not, it's just not right. So what I'm asking of my fellow council members tonight is that we deny this tonight so that these people can go home and, and, and be peace, be in peace over what this intersection is, is going to ultimately look like.
That's all done.
Yes, thank you. You know, as we go through and we have these conversations, you know, regards to these things, one thing that we always have to remember, there's, there's three readings to each of these. There's three. And what the, what that does for you is allows you to, if you do have questions, all right, if you do have concerns that you may need to look into, it gives us an ability to do some additional research. So we make the right decision, which is very important, very important. You know, looking at this, and I, and I understand Allison's, you know, request here. I, I completely, again, I, I understand everybody here regards to your ask, everybody. And, you know, when I look at though this history, and I look at 2001 when we, 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 he goes to get a building permit, and we've got a history of 2004 to 2018. I'm just curious how and what happened from a county level and from a planning level. You know, what, where, what, where did we as a county not serve this situation? Because originally, we require, we issued a building permit here. And, and so there was an opportunity there. And I think that, to me, that is worth investigating in this situation. The other thing too, I think that, you know, when you look at these types of situations, and we've got somebody that has a business that's making, this is their livelihood in regards to, you know, how they bring their money in and support their families, et cetera. I just think we need to really be diligent, you know, about looking at all of, all of the information before you make a decision. So again, I'm, I'm stating some of my concerns with what I saw. I, I understand everybody here in regards to what your ask is. Again, I, to me, I think I need to look at this a little bit deeper before I can make a decision. Again, it's based on three readings, and I do appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm worried about this.
Okay, um, I did, was not aware about the planning commission when they denied it. So that, that's concerning on the first reading. I mean, I guess on, and then they came back and they, something happened there. I'm concerned about the fact that the planning department said it somewhat goes along with the comprehensive plan. And then the other thing that concerns me is the condition around and, around the building and being able to maintain the area and get it cleaned up to county standards. We've had that issue a lot with people saying they're going to do it, but he's had a long time to do it, and why isn't it, why hasn't it happened, you know? And so I think the county's been very generous on allowing this to go on for this length of time, which are things that we're talking about in the future. The other thing is rezoning. Rezoning is the future. I mean, it, it, it's going to be hard to go back. And if you looked at the land, can you guys go back to show us, go back some slides to where it shows agriculture? Who does? Okay. As I see this, it's one parcel here, neighborhood commercial. And I see agriculture conservation. I see residential, single family, and some, maybe some rural development. But there is, I, I will vote to deny this because I, I see one little standout right there, and that, that concerns me in a community that is very proud of the fact that they're agriculture and a single family residential.
Mr. Atkins?
I was going to make a comment after Tom.
He's yielding.
Okay, so I just can't get out of my head how we started back in 2001. And like, as already been mentioned, where did we, York County dropped the ball at? And also, there's a gentleman operating a business. I have very much concern about, you know, shutting the business down. And I have some concerns about what is this building going to become if he doesn't get to continue to do something with it? Because I see it just becoming a bigger eyesore if we just let it sit there with no use, no power, no anything. And just like Allison said, be careful what you ask for because in five years, what is this going to look like if no activity goes on? I'm afraid that people are going to be coming back saying, hey, you got to tear this building down. But I want to know what has happened over the last 22 years from 2001 from staff. We heard from what the attorney said who was representing our client. I want to hear from staff what happened. I don't care if the planning commission thought about denying it. I don't care what they talked about when they went to executive session. But I think we owe ourselves some due diligence to find out what happened because it's disheartening to see on paper, 2001, and here we are in 2023, talking about a building that got started that maybe it shouldn't have never got started or somewhere long before now, it should have gotten squashed before we have a whole building erected and has the potential of being an even bigger eyesore. I wish we had more time to find out what happened because I don't want it to happen again because someone comes in in 2023, applies for a permit, and 20 years later, we're still discussing, can this person finish the building? Can he get power on it? I think we owe ourselves that kind of due diligence to find out what has transpired. May not change the outcome at the next meeting. We may not even get to the next meeting. But I want to know what happened during this time span. And I reiterate, concern for putting someone out of business, concern for the building not getting finished. And I want to know what happened during that span, so.
If I could, I'll, I'll try and answer some of those questions. And I, I think it's, unless Jonathan knows more than I suspect he knows, none of us were here when that building was permitted in 2001 or when it was shut down in 2004. So we may be able to do some research and find out more about it. But I want to correct a few things, is it was never permitted for a commercial building. It's never operated legally as a commercial building. It was built to be a residential accessory building. What that means is when he applied for a permit, he obviously told staff that would be accessory to his residence, and he would be storing things in there that were accessory to a residence. Never permitted to do bills, business there or to store ice cream machines or anything like that. So he, I don't know what caused the building permit to be shut down. Apparently, there must have been some problems with the construction of, or a building code violation or something. And we can certainly research that. And is there a possibility we could restart construction of the building for its intended original use, which was accessory to a residence? That, if that's possible, we could restart that. But that's all he's ever going to be allowed to do there is store things that pertain to his residence, unless you change the zoning. And that's what we've offered him. It's an opportunity to change the zoning. I understand there's differing opinions on council as to whether or not we think the zoning should be changed, and that's certainly council's purview. But he's never been allowed to operate a business there. He's not allowed now. He wasn't allowed in 2001. So whatever he's built out there, the future of that would depend on council's decision tonight and how it might meet current building code. So if there's a way for it to meet building code, he can continue construction of the building. But I don't know if he's applied for a building permit to do that. Jonathan, do you know that? So, and certainly we could work with him on that point.
Now, when I see a 30, who builds a 30,000 square foot building to store pro- Now, when I see a 30, who builds a 30,000 square foot building to store personal?
I don't think this building's 30,000 square feet.
Where did I get 30,000 from? Oh, 30,000 is allowed. Okay, 5,000, okay.
And there, at the time this was built, there were no restrictions on how large your accessory building could be, as far as I know. So yeah, I would have the same question that you have, Mr. Roddy, is why do you need such a large building to store residential things? But the fact remains, that's what he was permitted for, was to build a building to store residential-related items.
Okay.
I can don't. Well, I've struggled back and forth with this today, thinking about it, because I don't wanna hurt any small business. But at the same time, I sympathize with the people that live in that community. And I just question, not to say one way or another, would it be possible, though, David, all the questions we got answered could be looked at before second reading?
We can attempt to answer that. Again, I don't know how many records exist for why the building permit would have been pulled. Apparently, Jonathan doesn't know that at this time, but we could look at that and see if there's some notes in the file or something like that. So it's possible we may have more information at the next meeting.
And contrary to a lot of statements, I'm one that personally feels you'd need a small house, but a big storage building. At least, that's the way I see it, in my way, but I understand though, and I could see how, in the future, it could become something that no one wants, and it is out there by itself. But I'd like to have answers to that other, just like Tom said, and if there was some deed restriction.
How big is the building that's there now?
5,000 square feet.
And that, currently, that's the only building that's being used?
On that parcel, correct.
And the reason why? Staff's determined that, there aren't any plans here for him to expand his business. He just wants to be able to use it to store commercial equipment.
Correct.
And to, once a month, work on it from his home, which is next door.
I don't know how often, but yes.
Okay. Let me start with this. First of all, thank you for the folks who came out and objected to it. I heard some conflicting things. I heard folks say, we're concerned about what rezoning does. Because rezoning does take all of this out of your control. Because you don't know what it could be. It could be big, it could be large. But what I didn't hear folks say is that they were concerned about what he's using it for right now, today. I didn't hear an objection to that, as long as he cleans it up. So, and I see some nods to that. So part of my concern is this, and I'll say this. I agree with Ms. Love, to the extent that we do spend a lot of time on a comprehensive plan. And when a comprehensive plan says, we're not gonna use it for this, that, or the other, I think folks need to be able to rely on that, and because once you start it, then that becomes the justification for the rest of it around that area. That has been the concern that I have, and I do think that there's validity to the fact that somewhat consistent is a problem when you have a comprehensive plan that says it should be purely residential. What I'm struggling with is, I think there aren't sufficient choices to solve this problem in front of us right now. There is, if I put some commercial equipment in a big building that I have on my property, and the community's okay with that, and that's how I make my living, I think there ought to be something in between, rezone it, because I've had an issue like this in my district, where in order for the guy to keep doing his business, he has, his choices are, rezone to industrial around a rural RUD, or completely get rid of it, which is going to put his business at risk, and he can't work from home. And so, what I'm struggling with is, why don't we have any other options here to where a property owner can come in and request? I can't remember the name of it. David, you and I have talked about this on other issues, is to limit it solely to that piece of it, and if there be an outdoor storage, expand that, or a work-from-home provision. It just seems like there are not enough options here. It's this or that. And I think if there's a way to accommodate somebody who lives in a residential, their home is there, and we wanna allow them to keep doing their business, I think it's, I don't like us saying, you can't put commercial equipment in a building that you built, and that I can't do something with that. That's my problem with this. I do think that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and I don't think that rezoning it to neighborhood commercial makes sense. So I don't support that. But I really feel like there's, we need to have more flexibility in the code that allows this gentleman to do what the community is okay with, let him keep doing his business, but don't make it bigger in something, you know, that you don't have any say in. So, I'm struggling on that. And I guess I invite some conversation from council. Are you?
My initial thought was to defer till we can answer some of our internal questions that we have. I was sold on denying this until I heard the business is already operating there. We gave him permission in 2001, you know, barring whatever happened, and no one was on staff going back there. But there has to be a paper trail of something that happened. I would love to hear how this evolved. And we hardly ever turn down first reading, hardly ever. Not to say that we can't, but I think it will give us some more time to flesh out some of those details. But it's not my district, but I hate to put a residential, I hate to put an individual in this predicament right now, knowing that we don't have to do it tonight. If this was third reading, and it was either do it or not, a drop-dead date, that'd be different. But we don't have to say no tonight, but that's not saying that we're saying yes tomorrow. So I wanna try to balance that out and be fair to the gentleman, as well as be fair to the neighbors, because they have a great concern about what's gonna come after he leaves. And just to say that he has a building and has commercial pieces of equipment in it, I don't think that constitutes being commercial. Because just because I have a garage and I have a car in it, don't make me a car manufacturer, if I'm working on a car. So, like I said, we need to have some kind of balance where people can make a living on their own property without being full-blown, if there was a sign out front that said, hey, we're open for business, bring your ice cream machine in, we'll fix it, cars pulling in, cars pulling out, that's commercial to me. But if I occasionally go out, bring a piece of equipment back to my property, work on it, and go back out and install it, Amazon and, everybody runs every day to drop equipment off. FedEx drops equipment off. There's no, if there's 18-wheeler backing up in there dropping equipment off, that's commercial. So.
So are you asking Councilwoman Love to withdraw her denial, and we have a motion for a deferral?
I would love to see that.
Are you asking me the same thing?
Yeah, I am. I would.
So I am 100% not in favor of a rezoning. I'm not looking to put the man out of business. And what he's been doing in that building, we don't know. I'd love to see the inside of your building. I'd like to see that picture, personally. Because I'd like to see how many ice cream machines are in there, or you got sofas in there, or what? One of the comments that was made was that, you know, the owner may ultimately do something where he's actually living in the building. He makes a place where he can live in the building. I mean, what's that zoned? I mean, I don't know what that's zoned. I am 100% opposed to the rezoning of this property to commercial, because that allows it, that opens the door for it to be anything. Not in favor of putting him out of business. I don't care if he's in there working on an ice cream machine, whether he's in there with lights on or in the dark. That does not matter to me at all. Not at all. But I don't know if it's one step or two steps to accomplish that. You know, I'm just, I'm happy to withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer. But it is, I don't want us to, as a council, again, to water down what is in the comp plan. I believe that people should be able to count on what something is zoned. And I'm gonna tell you, this is how the rest of the county becomes Lake Wylie, is with rezonings like this. And if that's what people wanna see happen, and if that's what you want calls to happen, then that's a consideration. Because in Lake Wylie, we looked like this a long time ago, not that long ago. And every rezoning that came along was approved. And with every rezoning, what was coming beside it got approved, because it was somewhat consistent in somebody's mind. Maybe it wasn't put on paper, but in some, in four council members' minds, it was somewhat consistent. And so things just continue to roll into more housing, and more commercial, and more traffic, and more complaints, more and more and more, when in fact, what people want is less. Less traffic, less houses, not so much less restaurants, but let's face it, we all like the restaurants. But what I'm trying to say is, we are spinning like this, and we need to at least slow down and go back just a little bit, not spin so fast going forward. And by rezoning a very rural intersection like this, because of a problem that goes back, and somebody that's been in violation and couldn't find out, listen, I'm your councilperson. If you've got a problem with the county, and you don't know what they're asking you to do, for God's sakes, call me and ask me. Because I promise you that within a lot shorter time than 20 years, I can get you an answer on what you need to do and how you can accomplish your mission. And so, I will make a motion to defer until the next meeting, but I will speak just as strongly against denial in the next meeting. And if the county can come up with a way for him to continue to operate in that building, then I am 100% for that also.
Well, I'm second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and I know we're recorded, and it sounds like that I'm supporting you, and I am somewhat, so. What I struggle with, I lean towards denying it as well, but I have a lot of unanswered questions going back to 2001, 2004. How did these things happen? If it was approved as a residential accessory building, it's not being used for that necessarily. So I think we have to get some answers to our questions.
That's fair.
And then we can make a good, informed decision on a first reading.
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Cox made a great comment early in regards to our coding, and our codes in regards to, you know, as we serve the community, we gotta look at all aspects of it. And I think that this is a prime example where we may, there may be room in order for us to adopt additional requirements in order to make it as we serve the community. Because again, not one shoe fits all. So I think we need to look at this as an example of flexibility. And again, more to come, but that would be my comment.
Any other comment? I wanna be real clear on my position. I do not think that rezoning makes sense on this. I think that there needs to be something, I don't know if the gentleman is just requesting to use the existing building for the existing purpose, and that's comfortable. I don't think that rezoning it to something like that is appropriate. But I think there needs to be, we have a gap in the code that I think needs to be fixed, at least allow the option to exist for folks to do that. So I appreciate Ms. Love's willingness for us to get answers on that, and we'll defer it to the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter is deferred. Move now to item number two, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 23-28, tax map number 726000324, to rezone from RMX 10 to RMX 6, 27 acres in District 7. Mr. Buena.
Yes, this property, just about 27 acres off of Regent Parkway. The applicants are seeking to rezone from the existing RMX 10 district to RMX 6 for the purpose of creating senior apartments. So just a little bit of history on a 2016 rezoning. They rezoned the property from a mix, it was a split-zone property previously for general commercial and RMX 20 to RMX 10. Council placed a condition of approval on that, that limited development to a specific site plan, and that's here. So that's the current zoning today. The applicant is requesting an RMX 6 district. This is their current conceptual plan. There's a mix of cottages and apartment buildings in there for RMX 6 for active adult community, being 55-plus. The current count is 162 overall dwelling units. So this is what that conceptual plan would look like in the context with the existing neighborhood. So there's a larger view. And I did wanna point out, so RMX 6 is a new district. So that is currently the only district in which you can construct townhomes or multifamily buildings. And so there are a number of existing developments in the Regent Park area in the vicinity of this proposed rezoning that are either of those things. They are either multifamily, or they are townhomes. And were they to be proposed today, they would have to be in the RMX 6 district that's requested. So all of those developments that are outlined in blue, I've got the names of all the different developments there, if you back up a slide. Those are developed in today what would be required to be RMX 6. So those are non-conforming properties today. So staff recommends approval. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. RMX 6 is among the districts that's appropriate for neighborhood residential, which this entire area is labeled as in the future land use map. And it's supported by several housing element recommendations, including those encouraging housing for aging in place, supporting rezoning requests that are compatible with the character of the surrounding residential communities, and to promote a variety of housing types that are located within walking distances to commercial unemployment centers in urbanized areas. By an eight-to-zero vote, Planning Commission went the other way on this one and recommended denial.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff before we move to the public hearing?
No questions.
Yes, I do. Quick question. Planning Commission denied. Can you share with us the reasons why they denied the request?
Yes, I get asked this a lot, and I'm hesitant to characterize their recommendation, because typically, Planning Commission members each come at it from a single stance, and they might not be captured in a motion. But I think the tenor of the conversation surrounded on the fact that there had not been a TIA done for the rezoning. So there was a concern of, well, is it gonna be appropriate traffic-wise for the area? There was a concern that age-restricted apartments are less suitable than assisted living or townhomes in neighborhood residential, and a concern that there is too much congestion in the area for RMX 6. So that was a gist of the conversation that I heard.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Jonathan, on this, so the layout here, there is a pond that's here that's existing. Let me just, okay, go ahead and bring that up. So, you know, based on that, from a water perspective, you know, there is, the existing runoff before with this pond would tend to, I would assume, run back into this pond and kind of keep it managed. But with putting in parking lots around it, is there a concern that there may be water pushed out to some of these other homes?
No, and that's because with any development that goes in anywhere in the county, you have to put in appropriate stormwater measures according to the development that you are proposing, such that no runoff impacts your neighbors. So you are capturing all of your runoff.
Okay, understood. In regards to this, though, the concerns of flooding in that area, I think that, does it, it can't be a positive impact, I would assume, or not? Or you feel it can be completely managed based on that stormwater requirement?
Yeah, you can mitigate through design and having stormwater features placed on to your development. You can do underground retention. There are all different methods to make sure that any property does not impact another in regards to stormwater flooding.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Clark?
So, on the back of the property, there is an earthen dam that I understand is being looked at. So what are your thoughts on that?
So there is an earthen dam that is part of the construction of that pond. So the dam is not currently regulated, so, but all dams are regulated by the state of South Carolina. The county does not regulate those. So we've reported that dam to the state. And to my knowledge, they've not taken any action on that. So they make the decision on whether they want to add it to their inventory of regulated dams or not.
How long does that take?
It's not a defined process. We just alerted them, and they take action or they don't.
I understand there are some issues with, if the state brings that into play. So what, what would some of those things be if they're, if it's put into the state registry for earthen dams?
So the state does mapping for inundation, so were a dam to fail, they map out the properties that would be impacted by the failure of that dam. Currently, we don't have any regulation on the books that would change how development might happen on, on this site. But generally, you would think that a developer and their engineers would try to avoid having properties, especially homes downstream of a potential inundation area from a dam failure.
I just want to understand.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So Jonathan, is everything that's on this, in this plan, is, is that all RMX 6 or is it, is a portion of it RMX 6 and some of it is, is a little, is, is less dense? I know that, I know we're, in other words, I know we're zoning it down to RMX 6, but is that for everything on this? Because aren't there, like, there are two different types of, aren't there cottages and some multi-level, I mean, multifamily, not multi-level, multifamily combined?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that all of the, the structures will have multiple units in it and so they would be characterized as multifamily.
So some of it is apart, is some of it apartments and some of it is cottages, is that right?
Yeah, so they, they, they have, and maybe the applicant can speak to what they're proposing when they come up, but they, they have a mix of different building types, so they've got some three-story buildings in there and they've got the single-story cottages, but it's my understanding that all of the cottages are going to include more than one unit in them. I might be incorrect on that, but you can correct me.
And, and if we rezoned it, could it all become apartments?
Yes.
Rather than, so it could all become apartments and the density could increase if we rezoned it to RMX 6?
From this conceptual plan, yes.
Yes, okay.
Can, can we make it conditional that if we rezonate, that we rezonate for this plan and this plan only, like we would do with a PD? Because I get where she's going. If we did the rezoning and they say, ah, well, we decided not to do it, sell it off to someone else, they say, well, we can put apartments all over this place. Could we not stipulate for this plan?
A condition?
So what you're talking about is most appropriate for a PD, a planned district? That's not what they're proposing. They're proposing a base district. I understand. But what we would suggest is if there are concessions to be made by an applicant about inhibiting the future use of the property that might otherwise be allowed in the base district, the best method to do that is through a deed restriction.
So we're attaching a deed restriction to this rezoning, is what you're saying? We could do it that way?
You wouldn't have the deed restriction be part of the conditions of the rezoning?
The developer, they would have to get, they would have to put the deed restriction, like we did at Cherokee Farms, they would have to deed restrict it and then we, then we could approve it. It's not even when they sell it, because they can change it, they can go back next week and change it for their own property.
So how do we protect against?
They would have to deed restrict it.
Okay, they would do it.
If, if, if council supported this density. I have a question. I've been told, has, can you give me the history on the rezonings on this? Has there been recent rezonings? I know that there was one to 60 single family, is that the 60 single family?
Yes, that's the one that I mentioned from 2016.
And that takes out the, the water feature in the middle?
It does. And that's one of the reasons that you would not want to encumber a rezoning with a specific site plan, because that locks this particular plan in perpetuity until it's rezoned.
Has the applicant, so there, it's approved for 60 and the, the request is for how many units?
162, I believe.
It's actually 164.
164.
If you go back, somebody's calculated incorrectly. You've got 89 one and two-bedroom, three-story apartments, so that is correct on here, and you've got 75 one to two-bedroom detached cottages, that's 164, not 162, so we need to correct that. Or they need, they need to correct that.
And it has the applicant indicated a willingness to reduce that density, that's a good bit more than what's currently allowed by right?
It's, yeah, so it's my understanding, this is not their initial proposal, so this has come down even further from what they initially proposed, and yes, this is lower than the by right density for multifamily in RMX 6.
Okay.
If I could add to that, because I've actually tried to research this the best that I could, the plan's been reduced by 40 units thus far. So what they originally planned for has been reduced 40 units down to what's being proposed tonight. The 89 units in the three-story building and 75 units in the one-story cottages, that was originally 40 units higher. So it has been reduced by 40.
Okay, so Jonathan, or whoever, can you take that back, the picture back to the 2016 picture? Okay, so the way I understand it is if this rezon were denied tonight and it remained for this rezoning, and then someone purchases this area and they, they say, oh, you know, the lake is beautiful and it is beautiful, it is a natural spring-fed lake, so if I cover it up, I am probably going to have a problem, but they keep it the 60 single-family homes. They can come to us and re, and request to not, to keep the 60 family homes, but to bring back the lake. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's it.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know from management or Jonathan, whichever. They're passing this for 55 and up, right? The old folks on, right?
Yes.
Careful.
Well, I'm 58.
We're getting close.
I'm 58 and I ain't retired yet. My point is, is most people's social security don't start till they're 65. Are there, is there benefits that they're getting underaged retirement homes or?
I mean, I'm not familiar with the request. Is this going to, does the zoning tie them to a, of age restriction or is that just what they're proposing?
That's just what they're proposing. The, you could say that there is an incentive to do senior housing as if they age restrict it per the HUD guidelines, that they would be exempt from building permit impact fees for the Fort Mill School District.
Yeah, even though we all know that older folks are having to go back to work and everything else, it, I just wonder why we're saying from 55 and up when most people don't even, if there is any social security left, ain't even going to get it till 65, 67, whatever.
Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
I'm Brett Ellis, side of the 535 Cuxhaven Court, and I'm just going to be blunt, we don't want this.
Can you speak in the mic?
We don't want this. The, I mean, these are 500 and up thousand-dollar houses and you want to put three-story apartment complexes right behind them. And it's literally, it's less than 100 yards from our property line to that pond. And I would walk out of my back porch and look up at somebody on their balcony on the third floor. I mean, that's going to, you know, they can already build on it now. Primary difference is, you know, they just want to maximize their profits, but that's at our expense and we don't agree with it. And that's all I really have to say.
Thanks, sir. Yep, just keep coming. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Chris Clemente, I'm at 505 Cuxhaven Court. Basically that street that's, that backs up right to this. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things of reading through the, you know, their, their rezoning application. We, I, I've, I've lived here for 10 years, so 2016, we already went through all this, the rezoning from BD to, to, to the current rezoning. And there was some back and forth and not everybody was happy about it, but, but we settled on, on the rez, on the rezoning and the way it was now with the 60-odd houses with the, with the assumption that in that configuration, if that were to be developed that way, we would still have houses in our backyards, but they would be nice houses. There, it wouldn't be that many. The, the overall impact to the community would be mitigated. This, what they're doing here is, is, is tough. It's, it's really tough to imagine all that development in that area. So running through this, you know, some of their questions and answers on what they've already, they put here, you don't need to rezonate, we've already done it, we've already did this rezoning. That's what we settled on back in 2016. Michael Johnson was here, he worked, he met with us, we, we went to his office, we, we worked all this through and we, we thought we had it kind of settled, but, but here we are again. Compatible with the land use, you got to understand, those apartment complexes across the street, they're not part of Regent Park HOA. There are no townhouses in Regent Park HOA, there are no condominiums in Regent Park HOA. It's all single-family houses and last time I checked, it's a half million and up. So all of this other stuff that's new, that's across the street, up by Food Lion, across 21, that's not Regent Park. You know, maybe, you know, quote unquote, but not proper, it's not the HOA. And I'm on the HOA RB, so I get a lot of applications, I'm very familiar with all the houses in the HOA. There are no townhouses there. This is right in the heart. This is literally the heart of Regent Park community. Pyramid is right there, pond, pool, this is, is right in the middle of it. So, so just for reference, that's what we're talking about here. Restrictions on 55 and plus not paying the school impact fees. I could be 55 and my wife could be 30. My, my, my son was born when my wife was 34, so to say that 55 and plus can't have kids and they're not going to add to the schools, I'm not buying it, right? You could be 55 plus and still have kids. And then the access, this, this is my main point. My house is very close to Regent Parkway. I'm very familiar with all the motorcycles, cars with loud exhausts, I'm familiar with all of these cars that fly down Regent Parkway. It's a 35 mile an hour road, it does not have shoulders, there are no shoulders. They call it a two-lane each-way, there are no shoulders and it's 35 mile an hour. Once you get past the pyramid, it's 25 miles an hour, two lanes, one each-way. So when you dump a whole bunch of traffic onto this parkway, you're going to get exactly what we have right now. In the mornings, you cannot, you cannot get on the doormat without sitting at that light for five to six changes. You absolutely cannot go north to County Line Road without sitting at that intersection for 10 light changes. I'm not exaggerating, the traffic is awful. If you want to go and get on 77 North, good luck. That's, that's just the way it is, but that's not Regent Park's problem, really. So the access to this property right here is directly across from Pikeview. Pikeview is tough, you know, we, we built all, you know, they built all those townhouses across the street or condom, or apartments across the street, and it does dump a lot of traffic onto that road. This is, this is, this is going to be much worse. And the reason I say that is because as you come over that hill, you crest over the hill, you turn the right, you're going to have another entrance there of cars trying to turn out, with the cars from Pikeview also trying to make turns there. So I, when the police pull the cars over, they pull them right in front of my house. I, I see them pulling cars over all the time. Absolutely there's traffic, absolutely there are cars speeding, and it's only a matter of time before you start having the, the fatality accidents. And, thank you.
Debbie Gleason, 2902 Cherry Blossom Court. I live between Regent Parkway and Heritage Boulevard. Listen to your planning commission. We can't have this. This is, I'm with him. You've already got too many people in there as it is. I mean, you, you're taking every piece of property. We can't even see green anymore because you've got all these houses going up, people everywhere, more crime. This is not what I moved into this area for. I've been in Fort Mill for 18 years and you've messed it up big time.
Good evening, council members. My name's Anthony Cardone. I live at 3140 Highgate Drive, and this basically backs up right into my backyard. And I live right next to the creek over there. And we get a drop of rain and water is already flooding all up and down that creek. And so that's one of my biggest concerns and like everybody else says, you know, property value's going down with apartments going up is just not something that we really, you know, expected or wanted. But I, I can't stress enough that that creek is already overflowing right now as it is. So please help us with that.
David Sampson, 206 Township Drive, just up the road from this proposed development. I've been there since 2008, seen a lot of increase in population density in Regent Park. Really would prefer not to see any more, a lot of traffic. I would really prefer to see it go the other direction and have this kept as some kind of green space or park, if at all possible, because we really don't have any in Regent Park.
Hi, my name is Karen Welton. I live at 523 Cuxhaven Court. That's the road right at the top of that picture, I can see my house right there. We moved in two years ago and when we looked at all the homes in this area, we're from upstate New York, we looked at dozens of properties in very tightly congested neighborhoods. We specifically chose this house on Cuxhaven because the homes were far apart, my kids had room to run and play, and also because of the beautiful greenway that our backyard backed right up to. My kids, I have three young children, they love to run around in the greenway and we go on walks almost every day around the lake. This was one of our dreams when we moved here, was to have them in nature and exposed to this stuff. We also saw the proposed plans on the internet before coming here with the, I don't know if it was 60 homes or whatnot that you showed earlier, and we knew at some point it might be changed and developed. I never dreamed it would have what we see here today as 164 units. I have many concerns about that. Obviously, the landscape is completely changed, the traffic, the safety for my young kids to have a road come right in, right near where our backyard is, to have apartments backed up literally to our backyard, where our backyard, it would be feet away from my property line. When we purchased the house, our property values reflect the zoning that is currently there, where there's space between homes. That was really important to us. So my, I have safety concerns for my children, for the traffic, for the increase, for, for just having homes right up against our house where we currently have a beautiful view of the lake, it would now be the back of an apartment complex or, as someone else mentioned, someone standing on their balcony. It would bring so much development into this area and really, I don't believe that the area can accommodate it. We already have so much traffic, as someone else pointed out, it, it wasn't the roads, the systems, the schools were not designed for this many people to be crammed in in such a tight space. So in summary, I'm asking you to vote against the rezoning of these higher-density homes right off in this area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gary Griffith, 529 Cuxhaven Court, Fort Mill, South Carolina. So I spent some time here when we looked at the rezoning back in 2016. We were looking at the rezoning of this area and everything like that, and I'd like to correct a couple of things that were said earlier by Jonathan, and it basically is the border zones around there, those aren't multifamily homes, those are single-family homes. And then the part about the apartments, they're not even on the parkway, they're on Pikeview. So you look at that on the diagram up there, you're comparing something for an RD1, which changed to an RMX 20, and they're currently an RMX 10. And then you want to change it to an RMX And then you want to change it to an RMX6? Doesn't make sense. So, part of the other things that I wanted to talk about before I got irritated with that was, we spent a lot of time with Michael Johnson looking this over, working with Meritage, who was the one that had the proposal in originally in that. And this is the design that was up there prior to with the pond, was agreed to by Meritage, who then backed out after whatever reason that they chose not to extend their building, and so they built Saxton on the other side of Regent Parkway. So, the runoff, we have major issues in Regent Park with the runoff. The infrastructure for Regent Park was built over 30 years ago. If you look at the master plan that was put in place in 1994, that basically was Regent Park with the anchor of the golf course, the infrastructure was never designed to support the number of houses that we currently have. So, the master's design, if you go back and look at it, 1,200 homes. That was what the plan was. Yet, we're in 3,000 or 4,000 homes now there, and so when you start talking about runoff, the infrastructure can't support it. And just to give you an idea, one inch of rain, running for an hour, is about 27,000 gallons of water per acre. Multiply that out by 27 acres. Then, look at the amount of impervial space that you're talking about with the roads, the houses and that. I came up with a quarter of a million, approximately square feet, that is impervial. So, that equates to about 138,000 gallons of water when it runs for one inch for one hour. Where's that water going? The infrastructure can't support it. So, keep that in consideration. I don't believe when the planning, the zoning, and the building department is looking at the large picture, especially when we had a golf course that had 18 fairways. You multiply that out, it's 2.5 million gallons of water in one hour at one inch. And everybody here knows how much it rains and when we get the storms in. We've had flooding in Hampton Court. We've had flooding at the bottom of Heritage. It's damaged people's property. Yet, who do the owners of those residents go to to get what these developers have done corrected? They say it's not our problem. Talk to your HOA. Our HOA has no control over that, but the county does. So, I think you need to stop and think about that, because we've got property damage, we got erosion issues that are happening, and then also the uncontrolled water pollution that's being generated by all this runoff. Nobody addresses any of that. And like several of the individuals have said, we got problems on the parkway, which the county took over. We didn't have that problem before the county took that part, but now we have cars doing drag races out on the main street out there. They're doing 50, 60 miles an hour every day. The sheriff can't keep up with them. So, that's about all I got to say, but I hope you really stop and think about what you've done to the Regent Park area and the amount of density that we have, we can't control. Oh, and one last thing. Lancaster County has 1,500 homes coming online. They're coming off of Doramin and Harrisburg Road, which intersect with the end of Regent Parkway. So, those people that need to go to I-77, they're going to be cutting through. That's 1,500 homes. Now, asking to put another 260 or 250 if the people have two cars in this residence, we can't support that.
Ron Chase, 3154 Highgate Drive, Fort Mill. So, I've lived here back in the day when that was a golf course. And I lived here when it was a nice golf course. That company that bought it ran it into the ground. And if you'd ever played it, you come down that first hole on a rainy day, and it was all wet. It was just probably an acre at least of standing water. The dam is a spring-fed waterway, and they used it as a sprinkler system, which was great at the time because it dispersed it around the golf course. So, once they stopped operating and ran it into the ground as a golf course, then that pond would overflow. And all that goes into, on that south border, there's a creek. And that creek is about three feet total deep up to the top of the berm. So, since the golf course stopped operating, we've had about a half a dozen floods, and at least three I know of where property owners behind me have had property damage. It's gotten into their crawl space. Some of them have even gotten into their first-floor living. And their houses are up on a raised berm as well. So, that's one problem. And we had the HOA come, and FEMA came and talked to us, and FEMA told us they had raided it down as a flood plain, on a flood zone. And to your earlier point that I heard was, you're not allowed to add anything that's going to add water to that system. But we don't, we also needed to subtract from that system. The apartment houses that will win in were a sweetheart deal when they sold and broke up that golf course, and that golf course was zoned as commercial right there. So, what they were able to do is they were able to sneak in those apartment houses, which they said was going to be active adults, that's over 50, and it was going to be for not low income but affordable housing. And look what happened. A group came in there, they built it, and now they rent apartments. It is not owned apartments like it was originally proposed to be. They also got a sweetheart deal on this tract of land where they zoned it as R10 instead of R20, which is everything else is R20 in that area. Okay? So, now all of a sudden, we're dealing with an R10 where they were going to put in 84 houses. Army Corps of Engineers comes in, says, "Spring-fed pond, you can't fill it in." That cut it back to whatever the number was, I think I heard 61 houses. Everybody backed out. So, then, the owner of the golf course, they get this property back for a dollar, move their butt to Florida, and that's where they reside. This company that wants to put this in resides in Florida. They're pariah on this community, okay? The only reason they took it back was because they couldn't get the money they wanted. They tried to sell it, tried to sell it, and couldn't get it. All other areas are zoned mixed 20 except for that apartment, which we've already heard is illegally or incorrectly zoned, because it was originally commercial. FEMA classification, this is definitely going to add to the runoff. If you've ever been there as well, the land slopes down. From what I've seen in the proposal, they plan to put like a 45-foot block wall. Really attractive, and I still want to understand how you're going to get rid of the water. Project will add traffic. So, this is being built as a 55 and over, as well as I saw on the proposal, a memory care unit, and the third, three-story unit is going to be for like hospice-type care. So, a couple of other things that's going to do, that's going to add to our ambulance and fire department, which is already overtaxed with the amount of people we have. They do a great job, but like I said, adding more people, adding more people to that road. The sewer system in Regent Park right now is undersized, so I don't know if you know that. We're supposed to be getting a project right now to add a second sewer line, and when it rains and when it backs up, you can imagine what certain parts of Regent Park smell like. So, that's another item. It's a dangerous road. I've heard people say that. People are flying down that road. They have no consideration for people. You're not going to be able to cross that road. If you bring in a group of people who are either physically active adults or adults who are diminished capabilities, we have the risk of somebody getting hit. I already talked about, this company has a poor track record, and now they're asking for even more from this county. They took multiple runs at filling in that pond. This small piece of land is like one of the last bastions for wildlife. I don't like the deer in my backyard. On the same token, where else have they got to go? Right? We've cleared off just about every acre of land, and then, you know, I applaud the planning and zoning, eight to zero, saying no. Please, keep that no in place on this project.
John Thomas, I live at 541 Cuxhaven Court. May I request that you go back to the other slide with the proposal? Thank you for that. Before I kind of say my piece, I hope that all of you guys have at least noted tonight that everybody that has spoken, that you hear their passion in their voice, that they're passionately against this. I'm doing my best to contain my passion, because I want to speak logically to you folks, but I'm very much against this as well. I live directly center top of the screen, not where the really pretty green was done on the proposal, but where the actual real green is. So, actually to kind of think about that, because those are the people that have already moved here, your current tax-paying residents of York County, not the proposed ones that could come at a later date. And I ask that you think about those people just as much as you consider the applicants' request here. You've heard plenty about overcrowding, increased density. One thing I've noticed, you know, as many times as I've looked at this proposal, that what it does not really address is any additional infrastructure for Regent Park, Regent Parkway, which as you know, as last gentleman stated, the impending Lancaster County homes are going to start to use that cutway, especially after it just was paved less than a month ago, Not only that, but the road now is already extremely congested, as everybody's already mentioned to you as it is. This makes it worse. This proposal, listen, I'm not a illogical person. I understand that if you have property that you want to sell, I get that. This is a very illogical proposal. You know, there's an old saying about shoving 10 pounds of what in a 5-pound bag. This is more like a 2-pound bag. This is awful. So, two other things I've heard from you guys speaking tonight, there sounds like two unmitigated issues already. One being that the state damming issue doesn't seem to be fully vetted out. So, I think that's even reason enough for you guys to take away from this. And honestly, the fact that there's really no, you know, we all, all counties want growth, but you can't have growth without the infrastructure there to support the growth. And this, I mean, you're just going to open the doors and put these, all these people on the street that's already way too clogged as it is? I don't know if any of y'all, you know, drive this road frequently or go, you know, pass it, use it as, quite a lot of people in York County do already, is use it as a cut-through to either Indian land or to Pineville. So, taking that into account too, it's still, it's extremely overcrowded, and there's no mention here, additional infrastructure. There's no shoulders. So, you know, I heard council lady mention earlier about a former rezoning project looking like a sore thumb. I believe that was you. This is a sore thumb to all of us. This is two sore thumbs and a broken foot to all of us. So, and I also heard another council member who mentioned that to let these people go home tonight in peace with a vote for no, because this is, one, not completely vetted out, two, this is an illogical proposal. So, I remind you of that. And the last thing I want to leave you guys with is if you could all please look at just the top of the picture, and imagine that that's where you live, and that's where you and your family and your children go to sleep every night. And I want you to imagine you wake up in the morning in a three-story apartment complex that's in the backyard of your children's bedroom. So, please vote no. Thank you for your time.
Holly Drexler, 338 Mulberry Village Lane. I feel like in hearing that this is a 55 and up community, I feel like they almost are saying what they want to hear, knowing, oh, we got an older population now, and we need to give them places to live, and we'll all be excited for that. But when you talk about three-story or whatever, I'm thinking, the older I get, do I want to be on the third floor except to drop off and kill myself when I have to go into assisted living? But we have the one now that's at the corner of Gold Hill that's for memory care and older people or 55 and up to move in. I had friends go check on it, $7,000 a month. And I'm like, I'm a retired school teacher. I'm like, that isn't my pension. I can't afford to live in one of those places when I get to be that age. And then we talk about the infrastructure. It's like, our roads aren't improved. We didn't widen things. We've tore up everything on Gold Hill recently to build schools. I get it. We need those, but the road isn't any wider. Where's all that traffic and all the buses and stuff? And then, in the morning, when I'm walking my dog, I'm in the middle. I'm between Heritage Boulevard and Regent Park. So, we're right in the middle. We don't have sidewalks in our neighborhood, but everybody cuts through our neighborhood to go to the next neighborhood to get up on Regent Park. And it's like, you take your life in your hands in the morning, all the people, just constant traffic, cutting through. And once we get the solar piano place operating on that road, we've got Gold Hill torn down for a school, all that traffic coming through, and we haven't widened anything. Every time it rains, we do have problems. We also, if you walk back along any of those, the culverts are collapsing. All the ground has run off from it, and there's just huge culverts showing. There's water leaks all the time, running and running down the road, and you can call York County and do it and do it. We've had a couple leaks that have been going on for a few months now, just all this wasted water, and who's paying that bill? All the wildlife in our area, yeah, nobody wants a ton of vehicles in your backyard. They have nowhere to go. And I'm also concerned about, do we do bait drops here? I haven't heard anybody ever talk about that for the raccoons or the deer or all the coyotes that are around, and you hear them howling at night, and it's like, something bad's going to happen, because we are living with these animals, which is fine. I'm fine with that. But we need to start doing about rabid bait drops and get something out to the wildlife that's all around these families. You hear stories of people, coyotes jumping fences where children and dogs are, and that's going to be another issue that we're going to be faced with. It's just the congestion now and what we're going to be moving towards, it's like, we're making every little piece. Nobody is making just single-family homes with a yard. There's complexes of houses that are built up behind CVS on Gold Hill. Those houses are like this far apart, and that's probably an exaggeration. There's no yard, and they're just stacking people in. The good news is, those are houses. They're just not apartments or condos or townhouses or whatever, but just, please think this through. There's so much, and unintended consequences are going to happen from even just doing this. Thank you.
Anyone else who wish to speak against?
Hello, my name is Rick Mcateer. I live at 263 Heritage Boulevard. I'm not here to talk about any of the things that we've heard so far. I am on the board of the Regent Park Homeowners Association, and this is not a board position. This is just, I'm presenting factual information from what's transpired so far, because I don't know what you have and haven't heard. So, we were requested by the developer and representatives of the sellers, if someone could come and speak to our board regarding this proposal. And that information, that meeting was requested to be an informational meeting only, and that's what it was. The board has made no opinions for or against this, and so I hope that information's out there correctly. That's why I wanted to share this. We are, the information was presented to us as this development, and we have not taken any position on that. I just want to make sure that everybody in this council is aware of where it's at at this point from the board's perspective. As a personal perspective, I'm against it, but everybody's talked about that. I just wanted to share the board's position. And it's not, it's not a position, nothing's been determined. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Cox, members of the council. I'm Ben Johnson. Mr. Atkins, I'm a little bit over 55. Just a little bit, we bit. I think of Paul Harvey, and maybe it's time to tell you the other side of the story from our client's point of view. our client's point of view. The developer here, and I wanted to respond to a couple of comments. This is private property, it's owned by a private property owner. I represent the Michaels Organization, which is a fantastic national firm that builds housing of this sort. It's not accurate or fair to say that it has a poor track record. It has a contract to buy this property and we believe it will be a wonderful development. And other, the other thing, very quickly, this is, this is age 55 plus. It's active adult and it's not going to be a hospice. It's not going to be memory care. It's, it's going to be active adult independent living. With me tonight, I have client official, Chris Brookshire, and our engineers. We have a traffic engineer, so we want you to know more about the project. As you know, from the staff presentation, it's 27 acres. It's previously rezoned and currently RMX 10 and we're asking it to be RMX 6. To respond to a question earlier from staff, we do intend to deed restrict the property, deed restrict it to age 55 plus. And we don't expect to do any plan with more, any more impact than this, of course. That was one of the questions. The average age of the resident, and this is from our client and it'll be here tonight, is 72 to 73. The average age of a resident is 72 to 73. The site plan has been updated since the planning commission had it. The staff recommended it as, when it had 204 units. It's a, this, this isn't one of the projects that sorta kinda meets the comp plan. This follows the comp plan to the T, both in terms of the fit in the area and the diversity of housing and the appropriateness of the use. The new plan shows 164 units. The, I think Mr. Huckabee touched on this. 89 of the units are in a building. There originally, before the planning commission, there were two buildings. It's been reduced to one. The height's been lowered from four stories down to three and it's been brought more toward the center of the property. I will guess that a number of these houses are two-story houses and this, this is a three-story house basically moved in toward, near the lake. We've got a picture of the lake. This is the lake. The current plan of the county calls for 64 units, excuse me, 60 single-family units and also 30% open space. That project, you could not fit those 60 single-family units and maintain that open space and keep the lake. And that's not Ben Johnson, that's a comment of the staff. The, this project has been, back to the current project, it has been adjusted to account for floodplain locations, expected, and several of you may note that the county expects to address floodplain type issues and this plan addresses those. If there are more of them, we'll address those. And then the important thing is that this is a conceptual plan. Projects have to have building permits. You don't get building permits unless you meet every bit of your code and all of the construction is going to have to meet the code. So this, it will meet whatever the requirements are. The current ordinance requires that the property be built according to the 2016 plan. And instead of that, we believe that this, keeping the lake will be a wonderful amenity for this community. It's going to have, it's going to have trails around it. Older adults will have plenty of walking trails to walk on in a lake. I think the use of the term dwelling unit can be misleading. These are one-bedroom units, roughly half of them, the other are two-bedroom units. If you had 60 houses, it could be a three or four-bedroom house. So in terms of the number of expected total bedrooms, these projects are roughly equivalent. And this plan won't call for the getting rid of the lake. It's going to keep the lake. We're going to embrace the lake. Our client has studied this market and this project, this type of housing is badly needed in our community. We have older people who either are downsizing, want a smaller house, smaller apartment, or who are moving here, families who are here, who want mom and dad to come here. This, this, this project would not be something that this company would be interested in doing if there wasn't this tremendous need for it here. It's also a great fit for this area. Next door to it is the Pyramid Building. That's an iconic building. It's, it's going to be redeveloped. That is commercial. And then across the street are the Haven Apartments and that's a rather large townhome and apartment complex. And this is an appropriate fit and transition from those projects back toward the single-family. The important thing that we hear, I hear a lot when I'm before you, is what's this going to do to the schools? It's going to do zero to the schools. This is going to be age restricted. It will have no impact on the Fort Mill schools. Indeed, the traffic study, and our traffic engineer tonight, is here tonight, is very favorable overall compared to what could be built now based on what the county's already approved. There'll be zero school traffic. In terms of work commute, very few of these folks are still working. They're not going to get out on the road at seven in the morning. They're going, they might be going to the doctor at 10:30. It's a very different traffic pattern than what you would have under the plan, current plan that you have approved. It will be taxed as a commercial project. I know that's incidental, but it will be taxed as a commercial project. Our client has met with representatives of the community. You've heard a lot from them tonight. We are arranging for a meeting and we, I understand it's going to be in another week with the community to air more of this and to see if we can, see if we can resolve as much as we can. Thank you very much. I'm going to introduce Mr. Chris Brookshire from the Michaels Company.
Chris Brookshire, 8102 High Oaks Lane, Charlotte, North Carolina. Ben, you took most of my material, but I do want to thank the committee tonight for answering emails, correspondence, as we've tried to navigate this and let everybody know what we're going to try to develop here. I also brought some of our teammates here that typically work with us. We have our traffic engineer as well as our civil engineer and our operations team. Operations team can discuss the day-to-day operations. Traffic has, can discuss the traffic patterns related to an age-restricted community. And also our civil engineer who can discuss any questions or answers to stormwater and things like that. So the packet that you have has the program, is this my clicker right here? Oh, perfect. Also has a letter of support, has a picture of the four-story product across the street as well as a traffic memo. I'll let our disciplines kind of get into what they speak to in terms of traffic and operations. So one of the things I want to go through is a, the staff report that Diane Dil were prepared. There's some interesting things in there. The York County Future Land Use Plan classifies future land as neighborhood residential, includes a mix of housing types and residential lot sizes. The density is up to eight dwelling units. We are at six dwelling units. The other thing that's important is the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and land use. The request aligns with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map based on the proposed density. Housing Strategy 31, 3.1A recommends rezoning requests that are compatible with the character of the surrounding communities. Again, you have the Haven Apartments across the street and the townhomes. The housing element also recommends to promote a variety of housing types located within walking distance to commercial and employment centers. So we think that what we have proposed is consistent with the energy and the time and effort that goes into creating a comprehensive plan and a future land use plan. One of the things that Ben mentioned as well, we originally started out at 204 units. We had conversations with council members regarding the density. We shrunk the building down from four stories to three stories and also reduced the unit count by 40 units. So I'm going to go through some renderings here real quick for you guys. This is also in your handout. This is a view from Pike View looking into the community. Again, single-family dwelling units, these are not, these are just basically single-family homes. This is a view of this. Again, we are preserving the pond. The original developer chose not to preserve the pond. We're going to use this as an amenity, keeping the consistency of the pond. Again, you have seen this. This is a, this is an important piece here. The original buffer that was provided in the Meritage Plan was at 25 feet. We are at 30 feet. We have the existing buffer of 50 feet and then an additional buffer of 30 feet. So we're providing, if not better, buffer to the back of the cottages and then again the three-story corridor building. Again, like Ben mentioned, the existing residents are two stories and, you know, our building Want to talk about our conversations with the HOA. We've met with the HOA, I guess, two or three times now. I've had conversations with Susan, who leads that board. One of the gentlemen that spoke actually was in those meetings. I think overall, again, the HOA, as you mentioned, doesn't take a position, but, you know, they thought that the, the site plan looked good. You know, the conversations about saving the pond were important to them. One of the things that we will do as a, as a member of the community is we will make a donation to the HOA, similar to what the Haven Apartments have done. They'd also mentioned that their signage be coordinated with ours, so that's not an issue. But overall, the feedback from the HOA, again, they don't take a position, was not negative or positive, but they thought it was a good fit. So I'll make sure I get that one here. Another interesting fact too, as part of our planning for these projects, we do a fairly detailed demographic study. It picks up household incomes, family sizes, where they spend their money. It's a really detailed demographic plan. And one interesting fact that I'll share is that within a 10-mile radius of this site, there are 75,000 people over the age of 55. So as that population starts to age and wants to age in place, again, one of the benefits here to having that many people at that age, again, the average resident is 72 to 73 years old, they get to age in place. They get to go to their same doctor. They get to go to their same church. They get to see, they get to go to bridge club. They get to do all those things. So I just wanted to share that fact as well. Again, I'd ask that this, the council consider our proposed development. I think it's a good fit. Provides a much-needed housing solution to what's needed in York County and also is a benefit to the community and is in line with the future land use plan. I'll introduce Jeff Bailey, our civil engineer, who can talk through some of your concerns with stormwater as well as impacts to the pond.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Bailey. I'm with CHA Consulting out of Duluth, Georgia. Yeah, so there've been several comments about stormwater tonight and I wanted to reassure everyone, as Mr. Ono mentioned, we're obligated to meet the land development ordinance. So for stormwater, we're going to be providing water quality and stormwater detention for any impervious area that we're adding. So essentially that's going to be returning, or taking the post-developed flows and reducing them to pre-developed flows. So we have to go through that process in order to pull a land disturbance permit. So we're not going to be able to just add more water to the areas that are inundated today. Secondly, I wanted to mention the floodplain. I understand the county did a flood study earlier in the year and established some new flood limits along the back of the property that is in the floodplain and our site plan does comply with that. We are not developing in the floodplain. We're not filling. We will be draining water towards that, yes, but we are not filling the floodplain. Also, as far as the, the pond is concerned, as we've stated, we're preserving it. Should there be any impacts to it, we anticipate they will be minor and we will go through the Corps of Engineers permitting process. It's generally a nationwide permit for anything under a half an acre. We anticipate being below a half an acre.
My name is Alex Hurt. I work for CHA as a traffic engineer and there've been a lot of concerns about the traffic generation from this proposed development. And really what I wanted to emphasize is the comparative trip generation from the 60 single-family home, original zoning to the proposed rezoning to the active adult 55-plus residential development. So we did a comparative trip generation analysis and found that the daily generated trips are pretty much comparable, almost the same between the 60, 60 single-family homes and the proposed development. And in the peak hour, when traffic congestion is really the worst, we found that the 60 single-family homes actually generated more trips in the AM and PM peak to the tune of about 20 or 25%. So what that means for actual congestion is the zoning that we currently have for the single-family will produce more traffic in the future than this proposed development. With the growth of the area, traffic will increase and congestion will worsen and that's just an unavoidable fact. But with the proposed development, the traffic should be slightly less than what we're seeing or what we would see with a single-family zoned development. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Marie. I work with the operations team and management team of Michaels. And I've done senior housing for many years, but I did write something up. First and foremost, it's essential to emphasize that the community is not an independent living or assisted living facility, but rather a vibrant environment tailored to meet the active and needs of our mature residents. The growing demand for active adult communities have sparked our dedication to create an enriching and fulfilling experience for our residents. While our services are comprehensive, it's critical to clarify that we do not provide health services. Our focus lies in fostering a socially engaging atmosphere for our residents to thrive and enjoy a fulfilling lifestyle. The average median age, as my colleagues mentioned before, is around 20, I'm sorry, 72 years old. To ensure the integrity of our community and our leasing process, as a dedicated staff adhered to strict to our targeted age group of 55 and above, there, this is not fostering a sense of, well, this not only fosters- a sense of, well, this not only fosters a sense of shared experiences, but also cultivate an environment that caters to the unique preference and requirements of our discerning residents. Maintaining the age requirement within our lease agreement is paramount to upholding the essential of the community. Our active 55 community is not just a place to reside, but a space to embrace life at the fullest. What I really want to kind of talk about is our lifestyle program that we offer for our residents, which stands us apart from our multifamily counterparts. The type of events that we will offer for our residents that they will be able to experience is wellness and fitness, social activities, education and enrichment opportunities, outdoor activities, culture and entertainment events. And that includes anything from yoga at the pool to happy hours, happy hours with their dogs. They do social walks around the lake with their friends. They build a sense of community. There's also church that they do Bible study. It's an activity of, just imagine being on a cruise and you see seven to 10 events a day. Our team prepare those events for the residents. Some of our resident hosted, so the residents will take that leadership in hosting the events to build a relationship with their residents, or we will actually, our lifestyle coordinator will host those events. We believe in, you know, robust, heavy food, drinks, soda as well, and wine, activities for our residents, so they're having a great time and they're enjoying their life. Again, this community is not memory care. It's not assisted living. This is for active people over the age of 55 up to 75 is what we see the demographics being that live in the community. I think that's, and that's all I have. Thanks.
My name is David Tibbles. I am an agent of the owner, Freshwater Industries, of the land that was originally purchased from the Regent Park Development out of bankruptcy by a firm in Malaysia, a Malaysian firm I understand still owns the pyramid building next door. This is private property. This is investment property that Freshwater Industries purchased back in 2007. We simply ask that you take into account what was stated previously as far as the land use consistency of what is proposed here. Heard someone speak earlier. I'm passionate as well. So I'm a landscape architect by training. Last time I was in front of this board was for the Village of Baxter Town Center. Some fantastic development has happened around York County. This is what I would classify as a smart development. It takes into account a lower traffic impact than the 60-single families that would have been built. Question is, why didn't the 60-single families get built? York County pulled the sewer availability letter that was given to Meritage Homes, and they could not move forward. There are still sewer problems with sewer in Regent Park. I would love to say that could be my fault. It's not. This is an opportunity to improve the property, protect a wonderful resource in the lake that is existing, and just have to, if there are any questions about the owner, I am here because they own and operate golf courses. This is one they chose to do an investment, just as anybody would have an investment in real estate, and choose to do something else. They are owning and operating a golf course as we speak in Vermont. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer as best I can.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second. Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I make a motion to deny this project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
We seem to be in a very plausible deny mode tonight. Obviously, at first reading, I met with, I met with representative for this project, and I assume that they met with other council members also. And one thing that I was able to take away from as a benefit to a project of this nature is we're struggling in York County to provide housing for our aging seniors. Not too many projects come before this board that are willing to put in deed restrictions for 55 and up. We hear about impacts to schools. This doesn't impact the schools. We hear about traffic. Single-family homes attract more traffic than this project or any deed-restricted project. You have to think, when you do single families, they're coming with children, they're coming with buses to school. Just the mere fact that a single-family home is probably going to have two to three cars instead of one car. And I get it when they said that the traffic impact is far less than an age-restricted community. I get the fact that our schools are impacted less with age-restricted. And I was doing some quick math over here to the side. If you take the average home, if they decide to put 60 homes in there, average home now 2,500 square feet, that's more square footage than 150 homes would be based on these 75-story cottages. What that's saying is, even though you have more units, the square footage is less, the footprint is less. And so Fort Mill is an interesting dynamic from schools to traffic. Even though we wouldn't be collecting impact fees, I think you mentioned it's going to be taxed at commercial. You know, it's not all about money. So how do we solve this? It's like a double-edged sword. Single families go in, now we have the impact to schools. We have impact with traffic. Age-restricted goes in, deed-restricted goes in, less traffic, no impact to schools. So it makes it for interesting, what do we want? You know, I heard somebody mention that they like, they enjoy looking at the back, seeing the lake, seeing the pond. Well, the original plan, if you put it back on the screen, the pond goes away. This plan includes leaving the pond as an amenity. You know, so it's like, what do we want? You know, if, if someone doesn't want to see development come here, property's up for sale. Buy it. Make it turn into a pond, I mean, to a park. But when there's property available and it's up for sale, people are going to want to develop it. No one's going to buy this property and just sit on it so neighbors can just drive by and look at the pond. Shoot, that's not what real estate investors do. That's not what developers do. Like I said with the other piece of property earlier, something's going to come on this property. It's not going to just sit for another 20 years. It's unfortunate a golf course was there, they chose not to utilize it as a golf course anymore. Something's going to come there. And all I've heard for years and years about the impact of traffic and school population in Fort Mill. Now we have an opportunity to put something on the ground that doesn't give us traffic headache or doesn't add more than single-family homes, doesn't impact our schools. It's taxed at a fairly substantial rate of commercial. So what do we want? Or do we just tell people, no more building in Fort Mill? We had an instance, we were looking at 48 townhomes in Fort Mill. Someone said no. It's like, what do you tell people? What do you tell people who own property? What are you telling investors who want to invest in our community? We have to make up our mind, do we want just idiotic growth or we want smart growth? Well, I'll tell you, we got the two choices. Single-family that's going to flood our schools, flood our roads, deed-restricted, less traffic, less impact. So anytime I have a choice of those two, of sitting up here for the years I've been here, deed-restricted is always better for the community, for our schools, for our roads, and our tax base. So what are we saying that we want? Because we need to make a decision. We say we want smart growth, want growth to pay for growth. We don't want to overcrowd our schools. Well, this makes the muster of everything that we say we want to do, but we're saying no tonight. So when we come back in two more years, another developer comes with another plan, when are we going to say yes? And what are we going to be saying yes to? Now, I understand there's some sewer issues to serve. I'd like to know how that's going to be eliminated because I know without it, this project can't move forward. So I don't think that's something we should hang our hat on because if the sewer issues can't handle the capacity, the project won't move forward. So that's not a real big issue for this body to determine. So I'm sending this council, and it's not my district, but I think I have enough experience of sitting up here evaluating what's best or what's better. There's never going to be a perfect plan that everybody that sits up here and comes out to speak for or against is going to say, yeah, that's the one we want. But at some point, we have to make a decision of what do we want? And I think this is definitely a smarter growth plan than the 60 that's going to flood our schools, put more traffic on the road, because we have people do these TIA's and they're not cheap. They're not cheap. The latest plan out is not cheap. I'm not saying that we approve it just because someone spends money, but when we have a TIA or a study that says, hey, this is going to put this number of cars on the road, this is going to put this number of cars on the road, we have to use that in making our decision. We just don't throw it out the window. And I don't take very lightly the concerns of the neighbors. I take you very seriously, but this is property that someone owns, someone's willing to sell, someone's willing to buy, someone's willing to develop. What do we want to put here? It's not my choice what they decide to do, but it is my choice what's the best or better thing to do. Someone may want to put a grocery store there, script model. But I can tell you, someone mentioned about crime happening. 55 and up doesn't generate crime typically. I don't know if they want to go up three flights of stairs to get into the apartment unit, but that's for them to decide. So keep in mind, something's going to come, but tonight and moving forward the next three, four, six weeks, five weeks, we have options on the table. A good plan or a better plan. Either way, something's going to go there, and I would advise everyone who's against it to talk with these developers, get to know them, see what there's, let them know what your concerns are. Work with them. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least just don't show up and say, no, we don't want it, because there may be something that they can offer that you don't know. You may have a concern that they're willing to address that they don't know about. So we always try to encourage both sides to get together, have that conversation, because it's best if a common ground is met before everyone walks in here. So that's just my take on it. I don't like saying no at first reading because there's so much to be had, so much to be learned when we have that conversation. And I'm not sure if community meetings have happened to massage the number of units or where this is located, but have those conversations because this job is not going to get easier. And that's just my take on it. I would love to see this move forward to learn more about it, to give neighbors a chance to have that conversation. Open dialogue, be honest with them. And hopefully, they'll be honest with the neighbors that this is going to be in their backyard.
All right, I'll go ahead. So I think it's important for the citizens of York County to know and understand that often we are in a situation where we've got to invest the time to understand the best we can, something that we're going to vote on. And so I think you've already heard that Councilman Roddy has spent a lot of time thinking through this issue that we're about to dissect tonight, and I have done the same thing. So some of what I'm going to say is going to duplicate what he said. So number one, if we're not in favor of this, what are we in favor of? And Councilman Roddy made a good point. If it's not going to be developed, is it going to be green space? Well, who's going to convince the owner to sell them the land for it to be green space? Because as it's zoned right now, it is zoned for 60-single-family, three- and four-bedroom homes. The lake goes away. You've got, in that scenario, you've got working adults, probably two per household because these are three- and four-bedroom homes. In 2022, the average home had 1.94 children, 18 years of age or younger. So if we say you got a 60, you have, this is what we're trying to think through, right? As we're looking at the options as council members. So you've got 60 homes, probably two parents in a home, 1.94 children, but let's discount, just say, one child with a car. So that's three cars per house. That's 180 cars coming and going during rush hour in the morning, rush hour in the evening, and going to the schools. So that's kind of option number one, the way I'm looking at it. Option number two is, we vote to rezone this, and what do we get? We get a 55 and older community with average ages of 72 to 73 who do not have any children going to school. Children won't live in this community, so children are not going to school. They're not going to get out during rush hour in the morning. They're not going to get out in rush hour in the afternoon. They're going to do all they can to avoid traffic. Now, are you going to have roughly 1.3 cars per household out of, what's the number, 164 units? Yeah, you're going to have 1.3 cars per household, but they're not going to be out on the roads at the time that if you had 60-single-family homes, they're going to be out on the roads. So this development, this proposed, meets county standards. It's got good amenities. It's got 8,000-square-foot clubhouse with a pools, got pickleball courts, a dog park, walking trails. It's getting taxes commercial, as it's been said. It's going to be deed-restricted. You know, we're getting ready to work on an initiative here in the county for parks and green space, so this is going to preserve a lot of green space in this particular community. They're dealing with the runoff. So as one council member, I see this as the best option as opposed to, well, the best option might be that it remain green space, but that's not going to happen. I mean, if it is, somebody needs to call the owner of the property pretty quickly and see if you can make them an offer so that it stays 27 acres of green and a pond, which I'm not opposed to. I'd love that, but I don't think that's realistic. So our options really, is it going to be a single-family development or is it going to be a 55 and older community? And I think the 55 and older community with the average ages of 72, 73, and the benefits of them not being on the road and going to the schools makes more sense than single-family. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Want to go?
Yeah. So, so first of all...
Mr. Aldette.
Aldette, there you go. First of all, I, you know, I want to thank both sides here for this discussion. You know, it's so important to talk through these things as we look at these. And I appreciate the time that I spend, you know, with Michaels to talk about what they're offering, and the amenities are beautiful. I mean, absolutely beautiful. So I appreciate that. When I first came on county council, part of my district was Regent Park, okay? And I had it for a little while. And I tell you, the two things that I was involved with most of the time is controlling and trying to manage opportunities to slow down that traffic, okay? Going down that main artery right there. We brought in some flashing signs, et cetera. The other thing, one of the other issues was the water, okay? The flooding issues at the time were, again, a challenge, and so we spent more time at public works there than any other area, any other area. You know, Michael Johnson put a lot of time and effort into what he proposed, and I think that when you look at Regent Park and you see where there has been some development, and we've got parts of Regent Park that have three-story units that are basically been put behind it. Coming on county council, the feedback I got where people were just, couldn't believe that they have a three-story unit behind it because it impacted the value of their property. There was a major concern there. You know, as I look at this, we do need 55 and older home. And I honestly think that, you know, as a community, we need, we are looking at it in other areas, in areas that... and, and areas that I think make, make it a, a very smart location to bring it in. But the, but the concern I have here is spending that time in Regent Park, I saw the issues there. And I am just looking at this plan and looking at the challenges I've seen. And I know you said that you're going to manage the stormwater. I, I, I understand. I get it. But having said that, anytime you have something such as this in the large number of units that are going in, in the height of the units, I think that it's all about location. And I really feel like this is not the best location for this opportunity for the community. So tonight, I'll be standing with my councilwoman here next to me here to, to not support it tonight, but I think overall, I think this has been a good discussion, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
First of all, kudos for trying to save a pond in York County. That's my first thought. And my second thought, by the way. So before I sat here, I sat there. For two years, I sat there. And obviously, I represent the Lake Wylie area. And I sat there, just like those of you who've spoken against this tonight. And the reason for that is because of the cumulative effect. It really, it really doesn't matter how things that have already been built is zoned. What matters is what comes on top of that. You know, if you go to get an ice cream cone, they say you want one scoop, two scoops, some say three. Well, there's a reason they don't offer four, five, or six scoops of ice cream. It's because it can't, it just won't stay on the cone, you know? So we're at the point in Regent Park, and listen, I might be from Lake Wylie, and it might be a long way for me to get to Regent Park, but I've been there a lot. I'm very familiar with all the roads that you mentioned, where you are. I'm there a lot. And I sit in that traffic when I come over there. I get lost when I go to Fort Mill, and I usually end up coming back down through there. And it's just, the change is unreal just over the past few years. But I believe that if any area of York County needs a moratorium, even if it's just a moratorium in our minds, it's Regent Park. Because we've reached the point of diminishing return there. And a developer can get up and he can speak about investment property. But when you go back to that map that shows all of those houses and all of those properties around this development, those are all investment properties. Because you've made individual investments, maybe the biggest purchase you've ever made in your life or in your, an investment in your family, an investment in your community. These are all investment properties. And, and to, you know, take a site like this and say, this is a beautiful, the amenities are great, this is going to be beautiful. And, you know, we don't want to diminish that by, you know, God forbid, we don't save a pond, right? And, but what about the people that already live there? What, are we willing to diminish their property value? I, I just, I just think that the flashbacks of sitting there and asking for things that didn't happen. I couldn't break through to a, to a mostly former county council on what I felt like needed to be done differently. The downfall of Fort Mill, the downfall of Lake Wylie, has been rezonings for higher density. And it is, it is, I mean, for, for yet, I have to come to a meeting and beg us not to rezone for higher density? So unfortunate. It's so unfortunate that, I've been on this council seven years. I spent two years prior attending council meetings, fighting against development. Till I finally got to the point where I said, the only thing I can win on is the lighting. And I just started begging those developers, please don't put in lighting that has a glow. And in the back of my mind, I thought, because one day, by golly, I'm going to run for council, and I'm going to change that too. So, and I did. I think it is so important that we listen to the people. That is our, that's our number one priority. You don't, you don't know me, but I know your area. You've got one heck of a council person down here fighting for you. And you know what? She lives in Regent Park. This is, this is her backyard. And, and so for, for council not to listen to someone who is, is, knows it better than anybody is, 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 that's, that's unfortunate. We approved a, a 55 and up community in Lake Wylie, gosh, it's been a couple of years ago. And I'm going to say this, it always looks great on paper. One of the things that we had to do to get that approved is we had to change a standard in the Lake Wylie overlay because we didn't really have anything that allowed for that. And what they needed was a one-level home that didn't have a step up. And we changed that so that people that were 55 and up, like myself, could get into their homes. Well, at, at average age of 72, climbing up to a, a third, a third-story apartment, three levels in an apartment, that, that, that goes against what the developer that we met with talked about, what they needed. So, so there is no concern about a 72-year-old going up three flights of stairs or inside or outside, wherever they are. And I want to talk about the impact fee to schools, the impact fee for schools real quick. You know, in Clover, they might have this argument that, oh, my gosh, we're not getting enough for our schools to offset this growth. But let me tell you, in Fort Mill, you, the school board you elected, and the county council at the time, gave the highest amount possible. And the reason for that was to offset growth. So, so we, we've offset the growth of, 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 you know, 60, 60 homes coming. And instead of 100, however many this is, I don't remember how many this is, I've lost track of, of that. But I just, I just feel like, you know, this is not an appropriate, it's just like, like Councilman Aldette has said, this is not an appropriate spot for this. And I took a little break, and I came back, and I said, I'm looking at a screen that's got a 30-foot buffer between a proposed cottage and a property line. You know, I live on a property that's got a 50-foot buffer between me and the lake. I can't even, I can't even, you know, do, build anything in that area. And that's 50 feet. This is a 30-foot, 30-foot between existing homes that are obviously a much higher value. I just, to me, this doesn't make sense. And so, again, I feel like, you know, one of the things I tell my constituents, I and I take a lot of heat for telling them what to say sometimes, like they say, oh, don't tell us what to say. But one of the things that I think is very important is that when something comes up, you don't make a suggestion of what else it could be. You either let this fly or die. And you don't say, well, this could be something better. What if, what if it was this? You know, why, why don't you do this? Or do it here, or do it there. The only thing before us is whether to approve this in this location. I don't wish this on anybody tonight.
Several different ways. Oh, thank you. I personally wouldn't want it in my district. I don't like the high density. I don't even like the original 60. I think they are going to have water issues. And I don't really care too much for any of the issues when you're not buying the own to give you more of a dog in the fight. But that's just my personal, so I'm not really for it.
Okay, I made lots of notes because, as you can imagine, I'm extremely passionate about my community. We left Lancaster County after living there about 20 years. We, I'll never forget, we went to a little restaurant on South Boulevard that's not there any longer, and I picked up a ha, a book on homes. And there was this gorgeous home on the front of this book, and I, I looked at my husband, and I said, let's go look at this. We hadn't even thought about leaving Lancaster County because we lived on five acres and, you know, that was good, that was a good deal. We go that afternoon and look at that house. And he said, oh, my gosh. He said, we found the best thing ever. We have found the best secret, the best-kept secret in York County, Regent Park. Best-kept secret. Close to the interstate. We both had to travel the interstate. This little community, the enclave, just being built on the golf course, it was awesome. We were so excited. We just went home. And with, next day, we went and looked at, you know, made an offer. We were going to Regent Park. And we never thought we'd leave Lancaster County, but we kept hearing great things about York County. And, you know, we thought, well, Lancaster County is starting to grow. All that, of course, went down the tubes. So I know everything about Regent Park there is to know, inside and out. To the point, when I ran for office, I was walking down a street one day, and one of the folks that I went and knocked on their door, they said, go out there and look in the middle of the street and see how you would like toilet paper and sewer coming up in front of your house on the street. And I went, what? And I go out there, and sure enough, sewage on the street coming up in front of her house. And I'm like, well, this just, you know, this is good that I'm running because something needs to be done here in Regent Park. So from the traffic to many, many, many water issues, this, this situation, I said when I ran for office, rezoning has consequences. I mean, it may not be today, but it will be in the future. And also, high-density development. If I heard that once, I guarantee you, the 3,000 homes I went and knocked on when I ran for office, every single one of them, every single one of them said, please, we are sick of high-density development. And please, can you do something about the traffic? Those are the two things that I ran on. But, but I want to say something about traffic impact analysis studies. When I served on the planning depart, uh, uh, Planning Commission, I hated to hear traffic impact analysis studies because I felt like we really didn't do justice on that. I still feel that way. But the traffic on Regent Parkway is, is real. Because it is one of four roads in the county that they call that a thoroughfare. Did y'all know that? We are a thoroughfare. Because it goes from Lancaster County to 21. And it is not only a thoroughfare, but it is a racetrack. That 25 to 45 miles per hour, it doesn't matter. I mean, if, if you don't go 65 on Regent Parkway, you're going to be run over. And I was almost killed one day because a truck almost ran in the back of me, and I was going 80. Don't tell the sheriff. He may come and get me. But it is a mess. Traffic is a mess. And all that that's going on in Lancaster County, 80, I would say 80% of the traffic on Regent Parkway is from North Carolina. Would you guys agree to that? And I sit there, you know, I'm trying to turn left off 21 to get onto Regent Parkway, and I see North Carolina, North Carolina, North Carolina. So it's either like, from, coming from Lancaster County or North Carolina on Regent Parkway. So, I mean, that is a true fact. Okay, the other thing, when I was on Planning Commission, it is, when I first got on it and we would deny something, I was so proud of myself. I was like, oh, this is the best thing. I went and, I went and looked at the project. I felt good about denying it. Everybody, it was like, we all denied it. And they would say, well, wait until it gets to county council. I was like, what? We denied it. I mean, they should deny it. We are tax-paying citizens that have devoted time to be on a commission. We have studied that project. We have looked at the, the whole, I mean, I would go to the places. I would make sure before I did any kind of vote on a rezone that I felt comfortable about what the neighborhood wanted and so forth. And so if the Planning Commission takes their good time and they vote unanimously against a project, I think we really ought to give that, you know, a, a second look. Plus, a final note. I know that the community, when they did a rezone, Michael Johnson and his folks on council worked very hard to get that, that area rezoned to single-family homes. That's not something they did lightly, and it's something that I feel like that this group should really respect what, what that group did to rezone to single-family homes. And as far as the lake is concerned, again, I asked Jonathan, whoever buys that property, I'm sure that they are going to choose to keep the lake because that is going to be a huge expense to fill that lake in because it is a spring-fed lake. So it's, what are you going to do with a spring-fed lake? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair. Clarification from staff, please. So this property is zone RMX 10. So just to understand before I cast a vote. So in 2016, this was approved for a 60-home development. Is that what it's approved for, or could it be higher? Could it be 80, 100 homes because it's RMX 10?
But for the condition that was-
Row 013, to rezone from RSF 32, RMX 10, .99 acres in District 1. Mr. Bueno.
Yeah, so this, uh, application is, uh, to rezone, uh, just about one acre of property from RSF-30 to RMX-10. Um, it's a little bit of a nuanced case here. The subject property was erroneously subdivided into two parcels some time ago. Uh, and in that intervening period, when it was, uh, separated into two lots, the owner built a home on that erroneously created lot. Um, and at some point in time, that error was, uh, caught and corrected. Um, and ultimately, it was changed back to, uh, a single parcel. So, we have a non-conforming situation with two dwellings, um, on a single parcel here. Um, so, the applicant is proposing to, um, change that so that they have enough land to fit that existing home, um, into the, uh, district. So, the staff recommends approval of this application. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. It's directly adjacent to neighborhood residential land use designation. The homes are pre-existing, so there's no new development here. And there are parcels of similar size in the immediate vicinity. Uh, and by a 7-0 vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we move to public hearing?
None.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Hello. Uh, my name is Jessica Threet. I'm actually Lancaster County resident, but an Allen Tate agent with, um, Allen Tate Rock Hill. And my client is the applicant, Ms. Suzanne or Martha Burnett. Um, this came up as, uh, um, we started working together related to this property. She would like to, um, move on and sell and, and move to, uh, other things in her life. And so, when I started doing my research, I noticed that we had two parcels, two addresses, but I could not find definitive, um, property lines from a survey. The survey that I found of record showed only one lot, which then sparked me to contact the assessor's office. And as soon as I did that, that alerted them to an error that appears to have, um, separated this into two lots, excuse me, into two parcels and two addresses back in the 80s. Um, there is a stick-built home on, um, the front part of the property, on Country Lodge, and there's a mobile home on the back side. And to correct that issue, we've been given, um, the option to have it rezoned, um, which came with a fee that the, um, property owner had to pay. Um, and in her feelings is, uh, the fact that this was an error made that by the county at some point, that she is now having to pay to correct. And we actually want it to be two parcels, um, with the two residences, but we cannot do that based on the current size of the lot. So, for the last 30-plus years, they've been paying two property tax bills, um, for each parcel. Um, I found it interesting in looking at that, that the new tax bill just came out and has been sent to them. Um, actually reduced their tax bill this year by $1,000, $1,095. So, for the past hour long, and I, I realize that that's a skewed number, um, they have been paying two tax bills on this property. Um, a survey would have simply corrected this. They're not opposed to doing that. I want to make sure they take the proper steps to make sure setbacks are met, whatever those regulations are. But, um, we have to go through this process to make sure that that's gonna be approved before we can. Approval here really just allows them to do what was already in place for the last 30-plus years. Um, they want to get this handled, so they can get surveys, they can move on. And I don't think you're gonna have to go through an hour's worth of people opposing it either, so.
Don't jinx us.
Thank you, thank you so much. Don't jinx it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I would ask a question. If this is something that was to correct, was it an error by staff? Um, is this, I mean, did they have to pay a fee to, to get it back to where it was? Do we not need to, to reimburse that?
So, um, the error was made, um, in the 80s, as the, the applicant's agent mentioned. Uh, so, when a rezoning application is submitted, there's a fee associated with that. The only way for an applicant to not pay a fee is to have a county-initiated rezoning. Um, and that's an option, but, uh, we're already at first reading for the applicant-initiated rezoning for this process.
So, can council not amend the motion to waive the fee? Is that prohibited?
There's no mechanism to waive the fee.
So, you're saying it's legally prohibited?
We could deny the, we probably could deny first reading and then let staff resolve the issue. Is that what you just said?
I- i- if you were to deny this rezoning, the process would have to start all over again with council initiating a rezoning?
I thought you were saying staff could initiate rezoning.
Staff cannot initiate a rezoning.
No. Oh, I thought that's what I heard you say.
What's, is that fee about $750? What's the, what's the rezoning fee now?
$500.
Is this, any of this property gonna be sold? Well, I think in the best interest of time, I think they want to get it rezoned and moved on. $500 probably is inconsequential with what they're about to do with it, so.
My end.
I wouldn't advise doing it that way.
Yeah, I don't think we want to add to your delay if we're being told that we don't have that authority. But, Mr. Madden?
Um, the comment regarding the taxes, the different tax bills, is something I want to look into. We have had a situation a while back where we had to refund taxes with a kind of a mistake. And we've been back numerous years. I would like to look into that if I get some information and refund you back any taxes that might have been paid in overage.
Yeah. I was gonna men-, I was gonna ask you, Kevin, if you do that. That's excellent. Okay.
Do we need any council action to authorize that?
No, ma'am. If it ends up being over $30,000, we'll just have to figure that out on the agenda.
Well, I'd just like to say real, to y'all that I'm glad at this point we can get this thing straightened out for y'all. Sorry for what everything you've been through, so, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to item number four, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 23-39. Tax map number 522-0000014 and 021. To rezone from RUD to AGC, 5.63 acre portion of two parcels in District 5. Mr. Bueno.
Yeah, so there are two parcels associated here. One, a very large one, and, uh, one very much less so. Um, but the total area of the rezoning is 5.63 acres. So, it's the area highlighted in blue here that they are proposing to rezone from RUD to AGC. So, both of the properties are split-zoned here. So, this rezoning would correct that so that the entirety of both, both properties are AGC. Uh, the intent here is to do some recombination and create new property lines between the two existing parcels. Staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. The homes are both pre-existing. There's no new development proposed here. They just proposed to change some property lines. And it also eliminates the split zoning status on two parcels. By a 7-0 vote, Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none. Are, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number five, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading. Case number 23-40. Tax map number 650000021. Zoning request to rezone from NC to GC, .82, four acres in District 1. Mr. Bueno.
Yes, this is another, um, existing gas station on Gold Hill Road. Uh, the property is just under one acre. Their request is to go from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Uh, and the reason for that is the property is currently approved with that existing non-conforming gas station not allowed in neighborhood commercial. It is allowed in general commercial. So, it's allowed to exist as is without changing the zoning. Um, however, the applicant does propose to add a 2,900 square foot addition. Um, and so, in order to expand that non-conforming, um, situation on the property, they would need to, uh, rezone to meet an appropriate district, and that would be GC in this instance. And that would allow that expansion proposal to move forward. Staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. As I said, the gas station is pre-existing, and the scale of the expansion is appropriate for the area. Uh, as you can see on the zoning map, the majority of the immediate vicinity is already in the general commercial district. By a 7-0 vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion in a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number six, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 23-41. Tax map number 672-0000053. To rezone from UD to RSF-30, 9.62 acres in District 4. Mr. Bueno.
Yeah, so this property off of Porter Road is just under 10 acres. Um, it's, uh, along a series of properties that are surrounded by, uh, recent City of Rock Hill annexations. Uh, so, the comp plan designation for this area is municipal infill. Um, so, when that designation, uh, occurs, we're looking to what the municipal, uh, land use plan is recommending. And here, uh, Rock Hill's plan calls for interstate employment. So, this proposal is not consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. However, staff still does recommend approval, uh, even though it doesn't meet the strict, uh, reading of the, uh, comp plan because it's the creation of one additional lot as the applicant has proposed for one home, and that does not preclude future redevelopment, uh, that would be more, uh, in aligned with Rock Hill's plan. And it also eliminates another parcel from the legacy UD district. By a 7-0 vote, Planning Commission likewise recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before public hearing?
Did the applicant initiate this rezoning?
They did.
Because didn't we have a thing a while back that we were initiating UD zoning to get rid of it? And it was at no charge to the applicant, oh, the property owner?
Yes, and, uh, we actually, eh, through our fee schedule, incentivized people to rezone out of UD so there's no application fee when you are rezoning out of UD.
Okay. That's why I was checking, because had they paid, what I was gonna ask is there a way that we could remove that? Because I know we were doing those for free, so to speak, um, short while back. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? The only thing I'll add, that I know that there was a request from, um, I believe council got a, a letter request from the Martin Marietta. There is a, um, quarry right next door to this. They, they made a specific request that the applicant be made aware of their existence, which I would assume they know that. I don't think we can put that as a condition, that they sell those, that property, but I did want to at least note that. I think we got that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our first item, new business. Counsel to approve the purchase, radio TDMA and op-, inter-operability software upgrade from Motorola Solutions Incorporated, Columbia, South Carolina, for total equipment costs not to exceed $637,548.75 as part of the coronavirus and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can you turn on your mic?
Apologize. Uh, Mr. Madden, I thought we were gonna look at alternatives to Motorola, but we're making another purchase.
That is something we planned to do when the contract is up right now. We still have several years remaining in that contract. And this is a need that came up during last year's budget process. That's immediate, unfortunately, and we only have, and we have right now. But that is, that is my intention to search for an alternative to Motorola when that contract's going to be expiring and start that ball sooner rather than later.
So, we're somewhat bound by contracts to purchase these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number two, new business. Discussion regarding planning and zoning, internal audit system review. Um, I'll just start with counsel had expressed, um, a request to look into some efficiencies and maybe looking at, um, at the department. And I know that David, you had expressed that you were already in process of starting to do some things. Wanted to make sure that that was something that you could share with the council and-
Sure, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about what internal audits are, what they're intended to do. A few years ago, we, uh, created a Department of Internal Audit. Aaron Siegler was hired to do that, among other things. And so, we've done a, a number of those, uh, engineering department, assessor's office, the auditor's office. Uh, just go through, and, and the purpose of that, those audits are to, for us to look and determine if, uh, accepted, uh, policies and procedures are reasonable, if they're being followed consistently. And that's what we do in the planning department. And I think it's, it's noteworthy because planning, probably more so than any department we have in the county interacts with the public probably more than anybody. And particularly when it comes to areas of code enforcement, they're not always, uh, welcome contacts with the planning department. So, it is a, it is a little bit of a different, um, animal than most of our departments. So, what we'll do with that, um, with the internal audit is we do look at our policies and procedures, make sure they're all properly documented so that these are what we do with, you know, with every, um, every customer and from year to year. So, we'll document those in writing. We'll look for ways to improve, uh, efficiency or resolve any inconsistent application of those policies. And then, again, make sure they're being followed consistently and accurately. In addition to that, we'll do some benchmark, uh, benchmarking. Um, planning department's already done some of that. And that's, we have our own set of guidelines as to how long it should take us to review plans or to issue building permits and things like that. Just do an assessment to see that we're meeting those timeframes. And, um, also compare those timeframes to other, uh, counties, maybe some municipalities, similar type organizations, to see how we stack up against those other departments in that area. And then, finally, uh, kind of a review of the customer service. And we can do that by pulling, uh, specific examples where we've worked with customers over the broad range of things we do, which is, again, maybe it's a building permit, maybe it's a code enforcement issue. See how that interaction with, if there's, uh, issues, uh, good or bad with those interactions. And then make a report back, um, to, uh, management on, uh, what they find on that. And then to, uh, review correspondence that we may have had with our customers, see if they were handled appropriately or if there's, uh, opportunities for improvement there. And then finally, uh, they'll, once all that's complete, they'll issue a summary of findings again to management, and we can share that with council on, uh, any changes we propose to make.
Thank you, David. Um, I, I think, you know, I'll go on record with some of my questions and just ask that you consider, do you have a timeframe for when you expect to have a report back?
We did lose some, uh, a key staff member, but we are, uh, uh, filling in with others. But, I mean, is that a 60 days, 90 days?
I'm just trying to figure out when to bring it back to council and give you enough time to do that. Um, I think obviously the goal is to serve the public and to be solution-minded at what we do. Um, a couple of things that, that I've just would request that you consider is potentially building in and initiate a customer service survey on planning matters going forward. At least, let's kind of get a pulse on that. And, and I'm gonna make my suggestions, and you can just come back to us and tell us why you agree or can't do that. Um, I'm just gonna share with you come, my, a couple of my comments. I think, um, if we can take a look at when we do that review, how many times on average the property owner has to resubmit their plans and requests? And can we compare that to, um, pre-recode and post-recode to see if we're seeing any problems with that? to pre-recode and post-recode to see if we're seeing any problems with that? Because I think we're getting some questions that folks are having to submit things, they get feedback, they follow those things and then there's new things that come up. And so I think wanting to drill down on that and be able to answer constituents when they ask us questions like that would be helpful. To me, rezonings seem to have increased. I don't know if that's the case, that could just be perception. And so I would ask that you take a look at post-recode and, post-recode and before-recode, if we're seeing an increase in rezonings, if there's an explanation for that, if there is, maybe just go back a couple of years. So the intent of recode, as I understand it, was to make, to bring us up to speed because we hadn't done it in twenty years. And it wasn't to, to make things harder or eliminate the rights, it was to expand on them and bring them up to code. If there's a way that you can capture, are we being more restrictive to the point of causing an issue? The one that comes to mind is, is the one that the gentleman who came forward and said that it's, it's now, we've gone from kind of a reasonable standard to now it needs to be thirty days for compliance on car repairs. I think just being able to identify those things and make sure that we're being consistent and it makes sense. The perception I have, and again, this could just be because we're getting calls and it's not truthful, but if we can take a look at the last few years and see our complaints rising, are we able to identify why they're rising from the community? And I'm trying to run through my list here quickly. I think one of the things that came up was, is there, are, do we have gaps in being able to offer the ability for folks to continue to basically do what they've been doing or be grandfathered in without having to change the whole zoning code, which creates a whole lot of problems? Those are my comments. I'll let other folks speak.
Are these things that should be referred to a committee?
I think, I think David's taken it upon himself to do an internal audit, so I don't know that we need, I think the majority of council requested that, so I think we need to wait to get that feedback from him.
Action item.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to start off with thanking Jonathan and thanking Diane. I mean, you guys go through a lot. You've got a lot going on in the community, so I appreciate your hard work and what you guys do. You know, we hear the comments coming in and the challenge, I think, and I think you touched upon it, is that, you know, what, what we're hearing is that the community wants to look at it from a solution space. Where, where can we come up with solutions that are not black and white, but solution-oriented? And the other component of there is, is customer service. You know, to understand the pulse of the community, I think it's really important that the, our community knows that we're here to serve the public. And I know you all are working hard to do that, but again, you've got a large staff, there's a lot going on and whatever efforts you guys can do in order to drive the customer service, be solution oriented, and let's not make things black and white, let's make things solution based. And I think, you know, if we combine that, being a, being a solution oriented customer service environment, I think we're going to really see the community eyes open and I think we're going to see some great partnership. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or questions? I think Allison's question was a good one. I think if there's something that emanates out of it that requires council action, that would be, at that point, there would be, you know, if there's something that needs to be changed. Any other comments from council before we go into executive? Oh, we don't have executive yet.
I do.
Mr. Atkins.
Well, I mean, I've gotten the notion and certain ones saying that nothing has changed, nothing, well, I've been here my whole life and I know good and well that it has because I know there's parking lots that have been gravel and not been required to be paved. Also know we didn't used to take as many people's rights. People ain't going to buy land and houses and work all their life to pay for to have somebody else tell them everything they got to do. I also know with a lot of the contractors and all that I do work for, they've spent their wheels over stuff and it's cost extra money and whatnot. And then they get one thing to do and then it comes back with a whole nother list of things to do and they never get nothing resolved. And I just personally, and I'm going to say it, we ain't becoming socialist, we become. And I believe that people should have certain freedoms and rights if they work in and buy for their land and all. Should you harm anyone else? No. But ain't nobody out in the countryside going to take note to people telling them for the land and property that they're paying for, that someone else has a right to tell them what they can and they can't do, as long as they're not harming anyone else. Because a lot of this stuff that I've been up against and what people are calling and telling me, I think's absolutely crazy. And I've said my part.
All right. We don't have any action item on that, but David, thank you for sharing with council that, that approach. We move now to committee and other reports. Justice Public Safety Committee Chairman Tommy Atkins.
All right. Justice Public Safety Committee report. The committee met on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. Myself, Allison Love and Debbie Kloninger were present. The committee voted to allow the ordinance modification to the change on Keep York County Beautiful's Board meeting requirements to every other month instead of monthly. Second, the committee deferred the decision regarding the towing and wrecker service with the Sheriff's Department at Sheriff Tolson's request. We picked that up at further notice. Third, the committee also heard from the Fire Tax District Representative, Sean Wilson. Mr. Wilson requested a meeting with management and legal on November third to discuss the future of the fire service and the A U P further. The committee also received a brief report from Morris Russell, Fire Service Director, on the status of the A U P and what staff had begun so far. Meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, sir. We also have Planning and Zoning Committee Chairwoman Debbie Kloninger.
Yes, Planning and Zoning met actually today at four-thirty, attending myself, Allison, Councilmember Allison Love and Councilmember Bump Roddy. There was discussion regarding an update on, on the, on an ordinance for tattoo establishments and we voted to update that. There was also a discussion regarding connectivity. That was, no action was taken. And we did a review on an approval process for event venues. Planning will work with these event venues to give them a path for some temporary measures until hopefully some legislation takes place. And we adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am. We move now to citizen concerns. Mark Sleeper and Dennis Haynes with York County Flyers to address counsel regarding their program and services they offer. You've been very patient. It's been a very long night.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Dennis Haynes and I'm the president of the York County Flyers here in York. Today with me is Mr. Mark Sleeper. I think, where'd he go? There he is. He walked over here, walking around. Mark Sleeper is also, he's a past president of the York County Flyers. He's also on our New Field Search Committee and as a caveat, Mark is also just a retired, recently retired American Airlines pilot. So he's with us also. And he's going to go over a few things later on. But you've heard from some of our, our members that came up to the podium on who we are, but I just kind of want to recap a little bit on that. We're Radio Control Model Airplane Club located over on Langroom Branch Road and we have a hundred and forty-six active members that are of all ages. They range anywhere from ten years old all the way up into their, into their eighties. So we've been at that location right now for about thirty-five years and we've had a great relationship with the county. We maintain all the property that's out there and we are very good stewards of the land. We take care of all of it out there. We donate to the community. We have two organizations that we donate a significant amount of money over the years and Mark will go over a little bit about that. We did have some of the folks out here earlier from those organizations, but they've, they've since left. You did hear from one of the organizations, so. So why are we here? That's probably the one thing you guys didn't hear when, when folks came up. We heard a rumor a few weeks ago that the city of York has plans to purchase our airfield after thirty-five years. We really didn't think too much about it. At first, we did some research and found out that is true, that the money has already been allocated, that the money is already on, on twenty-twenty-four budget. We've talked to the city manager as well as other people and without telling us or anything, we found it's true. So what they want, what we understand is that they want to go ahead and make a recreational area. And that's why they want to purchase us from the county. We sit on a landfill. So we have, at that point right now, if that happens, we're out of there. After thirty-five years, we have nowhere else to go. Hundred and forty-six of us are out there. As you heard from one of the speakers out there earlier that we have, that the FAA has recently imposed or has restricted areas where we can fly these, these model aircraft unless we have transponders on them. We are an approved area. FAA has, had approved this last month. So we're in that spot. So what do we need from y'all? We need two things. Number one, we're asking that you reject the purchase of that land from the city until such time that the, the county can find us a suitable location. But even if that goes, doesn't go through and that plan gets nixed, we still need another location. We are encroached. If you look at, we got a big housing development coming from the west of us that's coming in. The, the trees of all thirty years or thirty-five years where the growth that are out there, the landfill itself is, is getting very, it's all sunken in. When you compare us to our, our airfield to what other airfields are out there, and there's over twenty-five-hundred of them here in the United States and most of those are maintained or supported by the municipalities. And that's what we need. We, we need, even if this goes, number one thing we need to do is get this stopped, this purchase, but we, on the backend, we, we need a new location. And we're going to ask you for that. So I'd like to turn it over to Mark for just a second here and let him go through a couple of things about our field. Thank you.
Well, I certainly want to respect the time that we're just about out of. Like he said, you heard from a number of speakers that talked about our community involvement. That's real important to us. We want to continue to do that and with a, a new field or certainly not, or certainly being able to stay on the field we're at, we can't do that. We want to be, we need your help in doing that. So as he said, in addition to the York City purchase threat, if it doesn't go through, we still need your help. But, but what I want to point out is York County has some of the finest parks and recreation around. I, I use them all the time. Nanny's Mountain, Kotaba Bend Preserve, which I know Ms. Cox is the chair of that board. Worth Mountain, Field Day Park in Lakewood that Ms. Love was spearheaded. I learned there's Kotaba Park and Tega Kay. Those two are spectacular sports and athletic complexes. Of course, Nanny's Mountain, Kotaba Bend Preserve are passive recreation. Point I want to bring out to you that hasn't been said tonight is that we want to emphasize that what we do is for maybe people less athletic, even the young people who aren't athletic, their technology is, is what we do with them and, and we do it through aviation. So York County Recreational Park, or I'm sorry, R C Park might fill the void that, something that we don't have already and it could be a model to the community. So we'd love to be able to work with you on that. I'm going to end here, a very simple proposal is that we want to work with the county, help find a suitable site to build a R C Park open to the community before we're forced out and to form a more in-depth partnership with the county, which what we have now, maybe some of you aren't aware, is that we have an agreement on the landfill, but that's all we get. There are clubs around the area, so this is not a unique concept. Gaston Fly, Gaston R C Flyers in Bestinmer City, the Flying Aces Pilot Association up in Huntersville, the Greg talked about the Atlanta R C Club, Hobby Park R Seers in Winston-Salem. What these other clubs have in common is their counties and cities totally support them. We're not asking for that, but, but we are asking for more support. We'd love to have a agreement with the parks and recreation. We want to be part of the parks and recreation. We want to be something that can be in the brochure, that not only do we have pickleball and soccer fields top notch, we have R C Park as well. And we want to help build that, help, like I said, a partnership with the county in order to, to do that. And we need your help. We need more than just land, that is crucial. That would be the first step, but we need infrastructure and financial support as well. And the last thing is simply, I hope we can somehow come up with a further discussions about this to explore that there's real economic and recreational value to supporting our club. Thanks so much for letting us talk. After seeing tonight, thanks so much for what you do, your service to the county.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. I think we'll get some feedback from management on, on what the status of that is as well. I do, I've been told, is Greg Johnson here? He also requested to appear.
He's, he's one of our younger members and he's got school tomorrow, so he left.
Okay, so he will not be addressing us?
He will not be addressing.
Oh, they're different? All right. But Mr. Johnson is, is not here either? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your patience tonight. It has been a long night.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all you do and, you know, on behalf of a hundred and forty-six of it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We do have some executive session, so do we want to have council member noon on agenda comments?
Turn my mic on. I just want to say real quick, I know every, seems like every year during the season change and fall rolls around, there's always conversation about the York County Fair not coming back to York County. And we had this conversation several years ago, we entertained it, trying to purchase some, some ag tourism property to be able to do that. So I just wanted to throw it back out there because I did tell some of, some of our citizens and residents that I like to have that conversation and see where we at. I know a lot of us up here, or a lot of you up here are big on ag tourism. I think this is the appropriate group, this is the appropriate time to bring that conversation back. We've been, we've been condensed down to a carnival in the parking lot, pretty much at the Walmart Mall now. And I think we, we're better than that. I think our citizens deserve a little better fall festival atmosphere than going up to the Galleria slash Walmart parking lot to eat some cotton candy, corn dog and take a spin on the little Ferris wheel. So I would like for that conversation to come back up in the very near future as to what we can do to secure a spot for the York County Fair to come back.
And if, and if anyone wants to see a good county fair, go to Union Counties Fair. Never remind you what York used to be still.
So that was your comment? That's, that's your comment, too?
Go home, my comment.
You got yours, you're out of the way.
You got yours, man. There you go, bro.
I mean, it's about community and everything else. It ain't about all this other mess.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All right.
Madam Chair, a few months ago, the accommodations tax was allocated and somebody went to the Arts Council through the C V B. So I wanted to give a report that in October, October the sixth, on a Friday, they had the Jazz Festival, which is the nineteenth annual. This was founded by Bobby Player Jr. If you don't know who his father was, Bobby Player Sr. was actually one of the first black Americans to serve in the Marines and he's from Rock Hill. He was also a jazz musician who played with all of the, the big names in the, in the jazz industry over the years and his son Bobby Player has kept that tradition alive through nineteen years of this blues festival. There were six venues, there were eight bands, twenty-five musicians, about seven hundred people attended. They estimate thirty percent were outside of York County, they came from outside of York County and there were seventeen sponsors. It was a huge success. If you haven't been, I suggest you go, it's a lot of fun. Great music.
Awesome.
Ms. Love?
I have a couple of things, not really fun things, but one is I would like to... But one is I would like to refer to the Planning and Zoning Committee, a definition, the definition and a review of industrial versus light industrial zoning. Second thing is I would like to refer to the Planning and Zoning Committee, a discussion regarding one acre average minimum lot sizes. Pick up where we left off in February with that. And the last thing is I would like to refer to the Public Works Committee, the discussion about Mobley Road and Clover, which is a request for the consideration of speed bumps there.
Any objections? To referral to committee?
If, if the wish is to use C funds, why would we send it to committee if we already have it? Or do we have to go to committee for speed bumps?
I don't think it has to go to committee. We've been talking with the, with the Dean Hendricks and David Hudson. And the, we're at the point of wanting to do it. And I think management just wants to be sure that council is aware and will approve that. I will use my C funds for that. And the state has already approved, putting in those speed bumps there.
There's one piece of, I'm sorry to interrupt. It does come with it a commitment to maintain those roadways. And council would need to make that commitment. To maintain those speed tables on a state road.
And it could just come back to council. It could just come back to council and not have to go through.
Does Mobley Road meet the criteria? I've been through this with some other roads.
Yeah, it's already been. It's already been checked.
First one was, was industrial versus light industrials. Is this something to do with SILFAB?
Uh, it doesn't have to really do with SILFAB. It has to do with similar things in the future where we.
Does it really have anything to do with SILFAB, but it could have something to do with SILFAB?
Well, it was, the question was gener, it, it, yeah, exactly. SILFAB is behind us, but it is for future questions regarding the, whether something should be, what falls under industrial and light industrial.
So when you say go to committee, what does that look like when it goes to committee? Are you going to invite people in? You're going to have staff lead a discussion on?
I'm going to have Jonathan tell us the differences. And that's why I said, just review and definition of what those, what those uses entail.
Why don't we, why don't we take those two items? Let's put them in our workshop. Let's just make sure that we have a little bit of discussion about them, then we'll forward it on. We got the workshop on Tuesday?
What, what two?
The two remaining. I think the, the, the reference to public works is probably not, as I understand it, we don't send that to public works. That's just a C fund request.
But, but, so council needs to, to approve the maintenance of those.
Well, it can be maintained and whenever it comes up.
It won't be, it won't ever really have to be maintained. So it's like.
Well, just know that whoever. All right, that's one.
So we're going to refer these things to workshop?
Let's just have, have a little bit of discussion, make sure. I know that the one acre lot minimum, that we discussed a little bit of that at, at our retreat. And I think, I don't think that the, I don't think that the majority of council at that time was prepared to rezone properties for individuals.
Four people wished.
Okay, who are those four? Let's go ahead and identify them now or do, I mean.
On one acre lots?
Yeah. The end.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but right now I'm not supporting just because the more I thought about it, I'm concerned about people's rights. So again, yeah.
I'm just on the record then, asking for it.
I think, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about it. If this is going to be revived at the workshop, we can revisit that.
But wait a minute, you just asked and it's four, three, not in favor. So why would we send it to workshop?
I think just because I'm hearing, what does that mean?
We workshop.
Okay, well, we won't do it workshop. I think having a little bit more discussion about what the goals were. My understanding from the takeaway from our last meeting at council, when we talked about this, was that there were, folks did not want to forcibly require people to change their property to one acre lots. That there wasn't for council members that would do that.
It can always be, it can always be rezoned. So I mean, if you don't want to talk about it, we don't have to talk about it. But I think it's something that the community is, is looking, looking to, looking to hear more about.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick, from RFATS, Exit Eighty-Five, which is the one sixty seventy-seven exit. They're currently going out to bid right now for that project. And they're expecting to, once the bids come back, the first quarter of twenty twenty-four is when they're actually going to be starting work on, or starting to move forward based on those bids. So it's good news. The other thing, too, I wanted to just recommend that, my father-in-law was a pilot and this program is really goo, I think this is excellent. The recommendation I would have is maybe we can look at places like Nanny's Mountain or, I don't know, even Catawba Bend or something where, you know, where we possibly could get something out there. I think it would be a draw to those places for people to see these planes flying. So anyways, I'd, I'd request that maybe we can look into that. The staff could. So thank you. That's it.
Okay, so wanted to remind, if you have something to go vote for tomorrow, go vote. And Saturday, Fort Mill, you can join us for our Veterans Day celebration. And that would start at ten thirty AM. And if you've never been to one of our celebrations, it's quite a treat. So I'm.
Little birdie told me somebody's birthday is tonight. You had your comment, Tommy.
Well, I was going to mention.
Michael Kendry.
Veterans parade also.
That's right. Michael Kendry's birthday, my understanding. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
All right. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, I do have a three items. A receipt of illegal advice, Clover School District and, and Plan Development. A receipt of legal advice litigation update. Receipt of legal advice outside council request.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move straight into executive session.
Hey, hey, cabin.
Hearing non, motion carries. Do you have most to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.